It's the 2023 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carrollk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Public participation will be held at approximately 5:15. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Board members, please turn off your microphones when you're not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I need a motion, a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
By Ms. Savigny and seconded by Mr. Whistler. Before we really get started, though, Dr. Dorsey was going to be here. Her husband has injured himself, and Dr. Dorsey is going to be with us via from the hospital. So tell Nelson we love him, and you take care of him, and you take care of yourself. Thank you for being here. All right. Now, do we have any corrections or anything we need to do with the agenda? If not, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the unapproved Board Meeting Minutes of August 9, 2023.
So moved.
By Ms. Savigny, seconded by by Mr. Whistler. Comments, questions, corrections? Dr. Dorsey?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. I had my hand raised for the agenda. Did we get a revised agenda by any chance? Because I just noticed that when we get to the second page, 6F, then we have 6H and 6G. I'd just like to say that we'll keep those in the right order, up GH.
Yep, no, yep, it hasn't changed. All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, I would like a motion for the unapproved delegation meeting minutes for August 23, 2023.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Whistler. Comments, questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the unapproved Strategic Plan Work Session Meeting Minutes for August 30, 2023.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Savigny, seconded by Mr. Whistler. Comments, corrections? Seeing none, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, I would like to have the Carroll County Student Government report. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your time. My name is Flamato Fafana. I'm a senior at Liberty High School and the CCSJ president for the 2023 to 2024 school year. On Thursday, August 31, CCSJ held our 2023 advanced retreat at Camp Wash-Pashua, and students sat through a workshop on networking and practiced their skills continuously throughout the day with a team-building workshop and a two-hour hike. Limited to 40 participants, last year we had 18 people sign up and attend, and I'm proud to announce that this year we had a 50% increase with 36 people in attendance. We are also introducing our theme for CCSJ this year, which will be Take Action. Our general assemblies will be based around the different ideas of scenes, highlighting the different aspects of leadership. Our next event that we have planned is our Fall General Assembly, which will be taking place on Wednesday, October 18, at South Carroll High School. And for the first time in CCSJ history, we'll be having Senator Reedy and Delegate Boucher giving the keynote address. Additionally, we'll be having CCSJ's first-ever youth forum, where students will have the opportunity to select from categories such as athletics and mental health, and hear directly from decision-makers in the spaces to learn more about what they're doing to help better the student experience here in CCPS. If you have any students interested in meeting other leaders across the county and learning leadership skills, please consider having them register to talk to their SGA advisor. Each high school is allowed to send 25 delegates, and middle schools are allowed 10, so spots are limited. Finally, our CCSJ Executive Board has each been working individually on their passion projects that will run throughout the school year to keep students engaged outside of general assemblies. I can't wait to share them all with you once they've been finalized. Thank you so much for your time, and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have public comment, and Ms. Savigny, you are on.
All right.
All times.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. All right, to have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers with a connection to CCPS will be allowed to address the Board for the allotted three minutes. Only those speakers that have registered online and have been notified by the Communications Department will be permitted to speak. Priority will be given to those citizens that are addressing the Board about an item on the current agenda. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Public participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and Board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the public participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. The Board has scheduled time on the agenda for public participation at approximately 5:15 p.m. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. Additionally, the Board retains the discretion to allow additional speakers as it deems appropriate. The Board is allowing no more than an hour for public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the Board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the Board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for Board members on the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or to the Board members. And our first speaker this evening is Caitlin Edmondson.
Hello and good evening. I'm here in support of removing sexually explicit books from our public school libraries. I'm trying to wrap my head around how this is a controversial topic. I would have thought if ever there were a topic that would unite two sides, it would be this: protecting children from being exposed to sexually explicit material. So the dilemma seems to be that as parents, we must choose to either want to protect children from sexually explicit books, or not want any books to be banned from our school libraries. The good news is requesting for sexually explicit books to not be available in public schools does not equate to banning books. So where is the controversy? It's a straw man argument to say that kids these days see worse things on the internet or commercials. This is about determining what is age-appropriate for children to read, and it is no different than how we utilize TV and movie ratings to decide what is age-appropriate for children to view. Even if you agree that your child should be able to read any of these books, wouldn't you, as the parent, want to be the one in control and have the oversight on this decision to ensure that you would be available for discussions on these adult topics? Why would anyone want a child to have the ability to hide this type of material from the adults in their lives? There are a few reasons I can think of, and none of them are good. Not making sexually explicit books available in public school libraries puts the responsibility back on parents, where it should be. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Nikki Guinan.
Hi, my name is Nikki Guinan, and I am a concerned parent with children in CCPS. I am not a radical activist from outside the county, and I thank you all for your time and attention to my thoughts on this very important issue of book selection. Literature by nature is open to interpretation, and each reader will interpret the same piece uniquely. Consequently, a parent's interpretation of appropriate literature for their child is also personal and can differ even within families. So who gets to define what is appropriate for my child and by what yardstick? From my research, it is unclear who writes the reports on book looks or their background. They reduce literature to tallies of curse words and passages they deem racy, and they put them online without context, without guidance from adults, and without any critical thought, arguably making them more widely accessible to our students than the media centers do. Our media specialists, though, have years of education, master's degrees, and ongoing professional development. They have gone through your rigorous hiring and training process. Many live in our communities, and their children attend our schools. They use vetted resources such as School Library Journal and Kirkus, and knowledge of their unique student populations to stock their media centers with appropriate material to engage and challenge. They can support their selections with two positive critical reviews that designated appropriate for their media center's age or grade level. And if they can't find that because the book is too new, then two media specialists in this county must read and sign off on their selection. Their decisions are far from arbitrary and unreasonable. I do not want to expose children to concepts they are not mature enough to handle, but I also do not want to infantilize them. These book challenges are overwhelmingly in high schools, where students already have knowledge of sexuality through the health curriculum, discussions with their peers, or even just dealing with puberty. They know that some teens engage in sexual acts, that same-sex couples do exist, and that their bodies and feelings change rapidly during adolescence. No book on this list will tell them any differently, but these books will allow them to live vicariously through others' experiences and consider the decisions characters make and the consequences of their actions, all from the safety of their homes and schools. So I have a solution. My children are really terrible at returning books on time, and in the nine years, or this is my ninth year here, I've received many, many late notices that include lots of information about the books they check out. They have titles, authors, publishers, and a thumbnail of the cover, just to be sure I get the right book. And so instead of removing books from media centers and weakening CCPS and taking away parental choice, why don't we institute an instant notification email of checked-out materials, so that when the kid checks it out, you get an email because that information is already in the system? It's already there. And then you would make this whole thing transparent with what your child checks out, and you know what they have access to, and it keeps the variety in there, in our school media centers, all the developmentally appropriate materials. And it permits parents to make the personal decisions and have the private discussions with their children.
Please finish your thought.
You don't have to engage in culture wars. Please allow parental autonomy while continuing to provide these varied resources to nurture and prepare our next generation of adults for life after CCPS. Here are letters from very, very many parents who are just as passionate about this as I am, right here in Carroll County. I'm going to leave these for you when I walk out. Thank you so much.
And our next speaker is Jessica Garland.
When I embarked on this project back in May, my hopes were to keep the Board meetings respectful and to avoid having to expose the public to graphic passages. It is uncomfortable for me to read and unpleasant for the audience to hear. Never in my wildest dreams did I anticipate that the community would be in such an uproar that their schools are not providing pornographic passages for their children to enjoy in their free time. They want to scream about banning books instead of discussing curation. I have not heard one public comment defend the following passages as being age-appropriate. "I took her from behind by the creek over there, what a tight little sugary cunt she had. He found her warm opening and twisted two fingers inside. Her breath caught sharply on the tight tissue inside and gave way. He let her garments fall to the floor, gently pushed her legs apart, and kissed her between the thighs. He kissed her again and licked at her secret sweetness on and on until his beard and her cunt were both soaked." The public comments are correct about one thing, though. Kids can find similar sexual content on their phones. They can hear about it from their friends, and they can even partake in sexual activities. And my God, as a parent, it is scary and awful that they can. I have three teenage boys, and I'm sorry to say to the new parents out there, it's hard. And not because my kids are bad, but because there's so much bad stuff out there. It's a 24/7 constant worry because the consequences of bad choices are not so little when you're a teenager. And when I send them off to school, it's not without worry. I lose sleep about whether they'll fit in, whether they'll know how to find their classes or make the team. I think all parents can agree that the people we trust more than ourselves to care for our children are the staff in their schools. It is asking a lot for a parent to trust blindly in the schools, but we do, until we find out that there's sexual content in the library for our kids to find and for parents to never know about. We begin to question our librarians' intentions, and we find books like Let's Talk About It stocked on the shelves, which states, I quote, "A great place to research fantasies and kink safely is on the internet. For the love of God, please tell me our media specialists are aware of the dangers of the internet and sex." As a parent, I can put all the safeguards I want on their phones, but it's completely ineffective if they can find details about what semen tastes like and how a vagina feels being torn apart in their school library. In any other public encounter with a minor child, these topics would be off the table.
Excuse me, Ms. Garland, I'm on your behalf, I'm going to say, please, no further outbursts from the audience. Okay? And I will give you a couple of extra seconds to finish your comments. Thank you, Ms. Garland.
I was 1:59. I have been attacked relentlessly in this community for taking on this project, but I'm not sorry or regretful. Children depend on us to protect them, and that means protecting their innocence. When I was young in Carroll County Public Schools, "Are you there, God? It's me, Margaret," was not allowed in schools because it talks about menstruation. Look how far we've come. What are we doing to these kids by saying that they can handle this content? I can barely handle it. Anyone that argues that kids need this is contributing to the over-sexualization of a generation and the current mental health crises. The community members fighting for these books remaining in libraries are arguing to normalize explicit sexual content to minors. I am sad for our children in the epidemic that treats them like adults. Every child should mature at their own pace, and rather than cater to those parents that are pushing their kids full steam ahead into adulthood, why not cater to those parents that want to savor their child's innocence a little bit longer? It only makes sense to err on the side of caution referring to minors and sexual content, especially in a publicly funded arena. That is why I beg you to stand firm against the radical community members losing their minds about parents standing up and expressing legitimate concerns for the safety of their children.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Wendy Novak.
I've been a resident of Carroll County since 1993. Two of my children have graduated from Carroll. One is in middle school. I have been an avid reader all my life. To look at my daughter, you might not think she would know anything about trauma. She is young, beautiful, and always smiling. You must hear her story to know where she came from and how she got to where she is now. Her story is graphic, painful, hard to read or listen to. She has shared her story many times, and people always say afterwards how much hearing my daughter speak helped them. How can someone understand my daughter's message about survival, recovery, overcoming trauma, reclaiming her life if you don't know what she's recovering from? Our middle and high school students are in the highest-risk age group for sexual assault. High school students are four times more likely to be a victim of assault. Books are magical. They allow you to have a window to another world or a mirror into your own. For those fortunate enough to not have experienced the trauma of assault, hearing about other people's experiences through books provides a window into another world. It allows them to learn what it felt like and how the experience impacted them. For those that have suffered trauma in their lives, reading about other people's experiences provides a mirror, allows them to know they are not alone. It might even let them know that what happened to them was wrong. When we got the call that our daughter had been assaulted, we rushed to the hospital. I held her hand as soon as we were allowed. When the advocate from RCIS, Now Care Healing Center, came, she was surprised that my daughter had family with her. Often, the survivors are alone. Sometimes survivors do not tell caregivers what happened. Either they cannot say the words, or they are afraid they will be blamed, or because it is a caregiver that did it. These books give words to those that are unable to speak. Removing these books silences the survivors, ignores that these things occur. These books must be considered in their entirety. They do not just describe the trauma the survivor went through. They describe how a person moves on afterwards. They show that you can survive, you can rebuild your life, no matter how bad the trauma was. Books like these help me to understand what my child went through. Referring to survivor's stories as pornography ignores the entire purpose of the books, ignores the stories of how they overcame their trauma, did not let it define them. Only looking at the passage that refers to sexual assault and calling the book pornography is insulting and harmful to the survivors. The survivor does not write about the most horrific event in their life with the intent to arouse someone sexually. Survivor's stories are not pornography. Let their stories be an inspiration. Let their stories help our students.
And our next speaker is Precious, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Akimbo.
Akimbo.
Akimbo, thank you.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Precious Akimbo, and I am a senior at Liberty High School. I think I can speak on behalf of everyone here when I say that the safety and security that our students feel in their schools is the utmost priority. So why should we remove books that encourage diversity? By removing this content, we are making students feel as if school is another battleground when it comes to their rights and identities. Just look at some of the books that have been removed. They include stories about being a person of color, in poverty, a girl, all things that we should be telling our students that they are okay to be. What's wrong with any of the things I just listed? By removing these books, you're allowing them to think otherwise. You're making students think that you do not care about them, and that you do not want, and that you do not see them for who they are. Schools are supposed to be safe, and if we want to keep them that way, we must continue to have books that affirm and represent all students. Some community members want to remove these books because they do not want their children reading its contents, which is fine, but if you do not want them to read the book, then just tell them not to read it. It's that simple. Why take away the opportunity from thousands of other students just because you do not want one child to read the book? These books are not in elementary schools for children. They are for young adults and adolescents that are mature enough to grasp and relate to these concepts. Soon, what will be left of our libraries? Books that no one, and I mean no one, in our schools can really relate to? Florida did the same thing, and look at them now. They're teaching students that slavery was beneficial to the Black community. Do we really want to associate ourselves with that? That is all I have today. Thank you for your time.
And our next speaker is Joe Tier.
In 1984, my now-wife of 39 years suggested strongly that we're going to move to Carroll County, and I'm glad we did. I've raised my four adult children here, and my four grandchildren are now being raised here. So tonight, I came to speak about the books that are up for reconsideration. As a father and grandfather, I'm disgusted and appalled that the material was ever accessible to impressionable minds filling the hallways of CCPS schools. The fact alone that everybody in this room would be highly uncomfortable if I read a passage from any of the books shows how vastly inappropriate it is. Last month, a former Board of Ed candidate brought her child to the meeting. So I'm not going to read anything, but if I did, the condemnation I would receive would be deafening, and rightly so. No child should ever be exposed to sexually explicit content, and especially not in a school setting, without the knowledge and permission of their parents. And I have an anecdote that illustrates this, and that's that I have several friends that I have shared these excerpts with. And three weeks ago today, I had him read, a friend read, he started to read one excerpt, and he stopped one sentence and looked at me and said, "I'm not reading this. This is pornographic." "The terms 'book bans' and 'censorship' and 'fascism' are buzzwords and dog whistles used to incite outrage. The people that use these words can't defend the content; they can use buzzwords to demonize people." So far, there's been five books that have gone through the reconsideration process, but they're still retained here. So we have a great education system here, and of all places, we got an endorsement on sports talk radio last week. Ed Norris, former commissioner of Baltimore City Police, talked about how he couldn't afford private school, so he moved to Carroll County to get his son a good education here. So I applaud you, the Board of Ed, for taking the action that you have to raise the level of education and to oversee age-appropriate content. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Alex Obrecht.
I've read recently the term "limited access" versus "book ban," and I wanted to say that I find that disturbing because if the limited access is, in fact, the only place where the individual has access to the book, it is effectively banned. I'm all right with anybody banning any book they want, whenever they want, for themselves. Put up a yard sign in front of your house that says, "This household bans books." Put a sign on your front door, nail it on Wittenberg-style, list all the books that you ban in your house. What you can't do is ban the books in my house, or my children's houses, or my grandchildren's houses. That's not liberty. That's the absence of liberty. It's not how we work in Carroll County. It's not how we work in this country. We have professionals that have been hired to do this job of looking at the books that are in our school system and assessing where they belong and if they belong. I do not feel that laypeople should be accepting or even introducing that level of responsibility above and beyond what our professionals are already doing and have done for generations. The idea that a layperson's opinion would be more important than a professional's opinion that exists in our school system is very foreign to me. It would be the same as if the county hired an engineer to design a bridge, and we took the bridge drawings, presented them to the public, and said, "Make any adjustments you need in these bridge drawings." We don't do that. That's why we have professionals. Ernest Hemingway, one of the most banned authors and one of the most well-known authors in the United States, had books banned from Minnesota to Texas and California to Connecticut. And his books were banned for any number of reasons. But why they were banned was because at a particular moment, at a particular place, somebody raised an issue with one of his books. I'm going to give you a couple of those issues, why we ban books. Coarse language. A character exhibited immoral behavior. A character exhibited communist leanings. I imagine that was perhaps mid-'50s. Unpatriotic statements in his books. And the last two are interesting. Depicts war in a realistic manner and depicts war in an unrealistic manner. We don't ban books. We allow people to read what they wish to read, when they wish to read it. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Matthew Hempstead.
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. I'm a parent of two CCPS students. One is in 12th grade and the other one's in first grade, about to have a kindergartner in Carroll County Public Schools next year. So I'm looking forward to having Carroll County shape our family's life for the next two decades. So that's why I wanted to come tonight to talk about something that, you know, while we're talking about liberty and we're talking about raising the level of education in our children's lives, there's something that I think that we're all missing. And last year, this kind of started with my kindergartner coming home with Chick-fil-A stickers on her twice a month, and it was, you know, Chick-fil-A Spirit Night. And her teachers and her administrators were putting the Chick-fil-A sticker on her and effectively telling her, at the end of the day, eat more chicken from Chick-fil-A. You know, and my daughter, who, you know, is sweet, she's very honest, and she wants to please the teacher because the teacher is an authority figure, she takes the sticker. But we're not going to Chick-fil-A. We don't serve Chick-fil-A at my house. You know, we cook our own food. So I have my child going to school and feeling pressured by not only the teacher, principal, handing out the stickers at the end of the day, the Chick-fil-A stickers, right? So this is one area. Let me just say, you have your teachers and your administrators, I want to be very clear, acting as brand ambassadors for Chick-fil-A. They are creating brand loyalty in children who don't know better, okay? These are corporate design marketing techniques, and we're going to get a little deeper into this because some of your fundraising last year, again, daughter comes home and says, "Dad, you got to sign up for this." My teacher says, "You have to sign up for this right away." So what is it? Says fundraiser, and I get a snap huggy if I sign up right away. Says fundraiser, and I get a snap huggy if I sign up right away, okay? So I don't have time to argue with her and like persuade her over the night, so I sign up. It asks me for six email addresses, all right? Three of them I gave the principal, the assistant principal, and the other assistant principal, but I had to find three more. So I gave myself and my wife. I get an email back purportedly from my kindergarten daughter begging for money for the school, all right? So we have a liberty issue here. Compelled speech. You're making my child an advertisement for Chick-fil-A. You're making my child, you know, write letters to people to fool them into going to spend money on a link. And then, what's the last one here? Yeah, the schools using ClassDojo, which again, here we are on the screen, social media site, we've got teachers taking pictures of kids in the classroom. I don't consent. My child doesn't have consent to be on there, all right? But nevertheless, we're getting my phone number, I'm getting text messages from ClassDojo, "Sign up." If you do sign up, they say, "Pay for the premium." So parents are led to think, in order to have access to my child's classroom, in order to have access to my kid, I need to give ClassDojo money. Worse than that, the data mining. They're collecting data from the parents. Nobody's saying anything about this. We're worried about books, but we're creating like zombies who just follow whatever the corporate says.
Please finish your thought.
I'm sorry, out of time. Yeah, I'm sorry.
And our next speaker is Christopher Coza.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Christopher Coza. About six years ago, my wife and I moved to Sykesville to start our family, in part because of the reputation of schools. Now that our oldest is on the cusp of school, my wife and I look to whom we wouldn't trust with the education of our child. Tonight, I would like to express to you my concerns over the content of the public school libraries, and the content that I will be quoting is graphic in nature. I encourage the children not to be present. I contend that our children's education must begin with instilling a value system where the good, the true, and the beautiful are placed as the objective. Education is based on the idea that there are truths worth pursuing, that the attainment of truth is a worthy good, and that through honest discourse, we may discover truth. I assert that this list I have here of more than 50 books compiled by my wonderful neighbors' Moms for Liberty falls well short of the objective. I do not wish for these books to be banned. I would encourage all the good men and women of Carroll County to know the content of the books. My argument is specifically this: Books containing graphic sexual content are not worthy of a place of honor in our school libraries. Students should only be given content that the parents see fit. Adults should be free to pursue whatever books they wish outside of school. My good neighbors, the contents of our school libraries are not meant to be a liberty exercise in the limits of our God-given right to the freedom of expression. Instead, our school libraries are to arm our students with the good, the true, and the beautiful through literature. The placement of these books upon those shelves is an endorsement by our educational institutions. The contents of the school libraries serves as a proclamation that these books are worthy of our children to read because within them is contained eternal truths and beauty that once obtained will better our children. From the list of concerning books, I question why Water for Elephants by Sarah Gruen is in Century FSK South Carroll, Winter's Mill, and Westminster High Schools, or at least they have been until our good superintendent, Dr. McCabe, made the prudent decision to withdraw them until they complete the review process. I'll read you now a small excerpt from page 133, but I encourage everyone to read that and get the full context on their own. She feels it free, delves both her hands between my thighs to spread them, and reaches down for my balls. She rests them in one hand, juggling them like eggs while she examines my penis. The passage continues, "Then I feel a mouth close around the head of my penis. I gasp. The women giggle, but it's a purring sound and encouraging sound as they continue trying to get a response. Oh, God, oh, God, she's sucking it, sucking it for God's sakes." I asked my good neighbors, the opposition, to explain how graphic sexual content like what I just read may better our children, and I would ask that they be specific. Perhaps when I say the good, the true, and the beautiful, my words list in altogether a different image in the minds of the opposition. An inversion of our morality would demand that books filled with this filth be placed in our school library. Going forward, I close with this: When we understand that the opposition believes that smuggling sexual perversion through literature to our children is an inherent good, then we may start to address this topic with honesty. I thank you for your time, and God bless our children, and God bless Carroll County.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Krista Binns.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Krista Binns, and I am a parent of two CCPS students, as well as an educator myself that works in higher ed. Let me begin with one of the common beliefs of the Library and Media Program found on the CCPS website. Intellectual freedom is every learner's right. I am deeply concerned that we are taking away this right when parents and community members make decisions that affect what is in our public school libraries based on what they think is appropriate. What I believe should be in the library at my child's school may be different from what my neighbor believes should be in the library. However, neither of us should be making this decision unless we are a school librarian. It is imperative that we allow the professional educators, in this case, school librarians, who have years of education and training to fulfill the responsibilities of their position, which includes collection development. As a parent, we guide our children with what we teach at home and help them to make decisions regarding reading material when we visit the public library together, or if they bring a book home from school. It is not our responsibility to decide what another student should or should not have access to in the library in the schools. That is the role of the school librarians and the librarian supervisor, the professionals with years of training and education in this field. Our actions must ensure that we uphold the core beliefs of our Library and Media Program, including intellectual freedom is every learner's right.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Grace Crowe.
Good evening, board members. My name is Grace Crowe, and I'm a senior at Liberty High School. When I was in sixth grade, I wrote an op-ed for the Baltimore Sun on Carroll County's ban on field trips to Baltimore. I said it was unfair because Carroll County students would miss out on a range of opportunities that Baltimore had to offer, like the aquarium, zoo, and countless museums. Banning books in school libraries does the same thing, but on an infinitely larger scale. By banning books, you restrict what Carroll County students can experience. You limit their worldview to only what is in front of them. Homegoing by Yagusi gives students a view into Ganaiian culture. Like a Love Story by Abdi Nazmian gives students a view into life in New York City as a queer immigrant. The Freedom Writer's Diary by Erin Gruell gives students a view into people growing from bad situations. Should you ban any of these books, Carroll County students will lose access to these experiences. They won't be able to empathize with their minority classmates as well, and they won't be able to empathize with people from other cultures as well. In a county where 90% of the population is white, books are of extreme importance. Books open a window into other communities and cultures which allows us to grow and learn as students and people. By restricting our access to books, you restrict our access to other people with unfamiliar origins, experiences, and struggles. And I want to be very clear: I am not advocating for accessible sexual content for minors. I am advocating for students to have the right to explore cultures different from their own. We could ban these books and try to make Carroll County as homogeneous as possible, or we could embrace others' experiences and allow Carroll County students to grow in their intelligence and empathy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Brandy King.
I'm here tonight to thank the board for looking into the books that are available in our schools. I'm speaking as a parent of a pre-teen girl that is enrolled in CCPS schools. I feel strongly that these books are contributing to an unfortunate epidemic that treats our children as adults. I was mortified when I uncovered the passages that were available in our schools from the Moms for Liberty chapter in the Carroll County. I could not stomach reading some of the passages due to the graphic and illicit sexual content. I cannot fathom how any adult would read this content and think it was appropriate for minors. I was saddened to hear that the first opportunity to remove these books from our school shelves was snubbed when the reconsideration committee voted to retain the titles. I think this speaks volumes about the epidemic that has been successful in over-sexualizing our children. I am here as a parent to voice my support for protecting our children's innocence and to ask you to put a policy in place that prevents this from happening again. By allowing media specialists the opportunity to select materials with little to no oversight, you have been complicit to exposing our children to graphic sexual content to include rape, sodomy, and abortion. You have given approval for passages like the following to be read to minors. "He forces my legs open and inserts the hard thing between his legs in me. It feels like I am being stretched apart. I feel like it's going to come out of my belly. I am so small, and he is so big. Why is he doing this? Is this normal? I try to scoot away. I try to close my legs. He just takes a hold of my legs and shoves them further apart. He says, first, he is going to get me dressed the way he wants, and then, depending on his mood, the rest will consist of me masturbating him, sucking his penis, me in whatever position he desires, and dancing over him while he masturbates. He says for me to start getting cleaned up with the bucket of water on the corner. He wants me to shave my vagina because he doesn't like hair because it gives him a rash." According to CCPS guidelines, supplemental material are those items used to extend and support instruction and address the needs of all learners. As a parent, I cannot figure out where those passages address the needs of any student, adult, or child. I want to have faith in our schools that they are selecting only safe instructional and supplemental materials, but my faith is wavering. One of your employees chose that book and thought it was appropriate for 14-year-olds. This was not one or two books that slipped through the cracks. There are 58 books to date that have been submitted for reconsideration by Moms for Liberty. This is not an accident or a slip-up. This is an intentional assault on the innocence of our children, and as a parent, I am fed up.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Hebbecker.
Hi there. Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I have two young children in CCPS. I hope that every parent of school-aged children in this county would agree on at least three principles: Our children should be raised in a safe place where they can learn, they should have access to material that introduces them to diverse views, people, and ways of thinking, and that they're prepared for adulthood best if they can learn about facts of the world, about the world, that might make them feel challenged or a little bit uncomfortable. Most, every parent would agree on those ideals, but we might approach them differently. Some might feel that their children are mature enough for certain information, while others prefer to introduce them, their children to challenging topics early in their lives. Neither parenting method is right or wrong, and even children in the same home might mature at different rates. Luckily, parents don't have to navigate this learning process alone. The county's education system thrives by allowing knowledgeable, trained, professional educators and librarians, many with decades of experience, educate children at the best pace for those children. They perform this job every day with ongoing input from CCPS families. All I ask is that we give those librarians and educators the freedom to do their jobs. Looking at the list of books to be removed from CCPS, this doesn't appear to be constructed out of objective criticism of their materials, but rather to steer children towards conservative beliefs. The list includes A Clash of Kings, the only book in the Game of Thrones series that depicts gay sex. Includes Slaughterhouse-Five, well-regarded as one of the most honest criticisms of war written by a POW and decorated veteran of the Battle of the Bulge. Includes A Handmaid's Tale, which describes how terrible society might be if equal rights were taken away from women. Almost all the books on the list are written by minorities who, simply by merit of being minorities, have been silenced by society for decades. This is not a list of books that parents have found generally offensive, but which a few parents feel offend them personally. I don't want Carroll County to become a laughingstock for embracing backward views. I don't want Carroll County to be in the national news for the wrong reasons. But if you read some of the, if you read some of the books banned across this history and potentially across this county, you'll quickly find that book banners are always on the wrong side of history and are not judged kindly. I'm deeply fearful that the list of 50 books, well, apparently 58, I just learned, that we've seen banned so far will grow to hundreds or thousands. Let's not start down this slippery slope. Allowing the government to selectively determine access to ideas has never ended well. I'm sympathetic towards any parent who wants to protect their children from growing up too quickly. If you don't want your child reading about a particular topic, be it women's rights, gay rights, transgender rights, or if you're fearful your child is not ready for depictions of sex of any kind, that's your decision as a parent, but it's against the spirit of our community and our free society to impose that decision on other parents by taking resources from their children or from mine. To those parents that find certain ideas too uncomfortable for their children, please talk to them, talk to their teachers, talk to the librarians, take an interest in their education. Expose them to challenging ideas at the age you feel is best, or not at all, I don't care. Find a way to raise them in a manner and pace you find acceptable, but don't impose your personal beliefs on every other child, and don't tie the hands of educators and librarians that are working to build a curriculum that accommodates everyone. Thank you.
And our next speaker is Kim Zentz.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. The passage I am about to read, I am sorry. "So, Paul, did you fill up her tits? My dick is twice as big as it was. You know, Jake, church camp is the best place to score pussy. I was feeling up that one blonde girl last night. What's her name? Cindy? Yeah, and I'm talking 34 double D, I swear it. I apologize for making anyone in this room uncomfortable. But can you imagine a child reading that passage who has no context and is not in the right environment? Unfortunately, we're being forced to read these passages because people in and outside our community are deliberately misleading the public. This idea of book banning is a manufactured crisis designed to intimidate and silence families who are concerned about their children being sexualized and exposed to content they are uncomfortable with. This is a scare tactic, and we will not stop. Hundreds of parents have been writing for months to express their concern and disgust at the content that we have exposed. It wasn't until this past week that a statewide organization decided to become involved with an issue that is happening within our county. What I would like to see is anyone who is concerned with censorship to come up and read these passages that we've identified and maintain that they are appropriate. You will find that the content is indefensible, but they are relying on the concept of censorship to hide behind. Thank you."
Thank you. And our last speaker is Pam Holbein.
Good afternoon, board members, teachers, community members. My name is Pam Holbein. I'm a parent of one graduate of CCPS and a student, and I have another student here in CCPS, making this my 17th year as a CCPS parent. I'm here today to discuss book banning. I'm quite aware that I will not change your mind. You've already made your decision. However, my hope is that you will maybe stop and do some critical thinking. Because in my 17 years as a CCPS parent, I have never encountered so much vitriol towards books, towards our teachers, towards our media specialists, as I have in the past few months. As you know, there are already rigorous review processes in place when a book is selected for the school library collection. And librarians are required to have advanced degrees in library science and are trained to evaluate books for appropriateness for grade levels and age levels. We pay them to have this expertise and to do that job for our schools. Our media specialists are trained to talk to students who come in looking for books to help them choose books that are appropriate for that student's age, reading level, likes, and needs. Let them do their job. The problem, there have been comments when asked, "What is pornography?", such as, "I know it when I see it." The problem is that overly broad definition does not distinguish between books like All Boys Aren't Blue or Hardcore Porn. There is a scene in that book that some describe as pornographic, but that scene, which makes up just a page in the entire book, illustrates the most difficult part of George M. Johnson's life. They are sharing this as an experience they had, but also that they learned from, and want others to be aware and know that they're not alone. This very censorship against their book will silence some of the most vulnerable students. I recognize not every parent wants their child to read about these topics, and that is their choice and their parental right. However, pulling books from the library means that no one can check them out, and that is the very definition of a book ban. is the very definition of a book ban. That is censorship, and it violates my liberties and the First Amendment rights of my kids. And just an FYI, the First Amendment guarantees all individuals the right to express their ideas without governmental interference and to read and listen to the ideas of others. The Freedom to Read Foundation was established to promote and defend this right. And all we have to do is look at past to know that book banners are never on the winning side. Thank you.
And Ms. Herbert, that concludes our speakers.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from our employee groups. I don't know if people want to leave first. That's up to you all.
I'm on one.
I didn't mean it for you, but I, you know, I know, I, I imagine like students might have homework and I know.
She rehearsed.
Sorry. I know.
All right.
Sorry.
That's okay, Marshall. I got it. Listen to their stuff.
Yeah.
Now, somebody's cheering for me.
Yeah. Very true.
Okay, we ready now?
Yes, Pam.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, board members. I don't see Commissioner tonight. I am Sles Jordan, President of C C E A. The Carroll County Education Association is an educators' union, not solely a teachers' union, as I often hear. Some might say that I'm just playing with semantics, but I am not. C C A represents educators. Sure, some of us are classroom teachers, but members are also media specialists, school counselors, speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, registered nurses, interventionists, occupational therapist assistants, physical therapist assistants, parent educators, mentor teachers, reading specialists, mathematics specialists, mental health therapists, Judy Center Learning Community teachers, J R O T C instructors, academic facilitators, birth-through-five special education services, high school facilitators of student support, ESOL resource teachers, advanced academic educators, career connection coordinators, and behavior sports specialists. Special education, special education educators who work with students from birth to age 21 in a variety of settings, the classroom, Learning for Independence, BEST Autism Program, and the Transitions Academy, to name a few. So we are more than teachers. C C A is disappointed that Dr. McCabe has decided not to follow the established C C P S procedure on request for reconsideration of books in the C C P S Media Center collection. There was an established procedure and committee, and C C A does not believe the books should have been pulled from the shelves simply because of the larger number of challenges. C C A believes that the process should have been followed and requests should have been processed in the order they received, understanding, yes, this may take longer than the 30 days in the procedure. That's the part that should have changed. The entire community needs to be able to trust that there are established procedures and that they will be followed. C C A understands the concerns raised over the last several weeks. This is not a black and white issue. There are shades of gray, although not 50 of them. There may be books that, when reviewed as a whole through the established process, should be removed or limited to older students, but the key is that the book must be read and judged as a whole, not by a page or a chapter. C C A is very concerned that Appendix J, Library-Media-Supplementary-Material-Verification Form, states that the titles have to be appropriate for all grade bands within a school building at the secondary level. This means middle school students will only have access to books deemed appropriate for sixth graders, and high school students will only have access deemed appropriate for ninth graders. How is that appropriate? In order to complete Appendix J with fidelity, a media specialist would have to read each book at a minimum once before putting it on the shelf. How is this realistically going to work? What about books about Pokemon, Legos, and John Deere Tractors that kids love but will absolutely not be reviewed by the standard sources listed in Appendix J and therefore won't be able to be purchased? What about books for students learning English as a second language? Again, they are not reviewed by standard sources. Are we not going to have books for students to read if their first language is not English? Cookbooks are also not reviewed by standard sources and are actually considered adult books. So now, are they not allowed in our schools? And I'm sure someone's going to say, no one has questioned the cookbooks, but when procedures are changed, we must consider all possible outcomes, intended or not. On an unrelated and a personal note, Lois Salver was a Winter Smokey custodian for 20 years, where I taught for 20 years. She died on September 3rd, sadly, a few months before she was going to retire. I have oft, I have often said how every adult in the school building is an educator. Lois educated students and staff with the way she treated every single person with kindness and respect. I mentioned her passing to a student who graduated 15 years ago, and he immediately smiled at the memory of her. She was a trusted adult to students and a trusted friend to staff. Carroll County would be a better place if people would follow Lois's example and treat everyone with respect, even when we disagree with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. McCabe and members of the Board of Education. I'm Cindy Porter, President of CASE, representing education support professionals who are clericals, assistants, and LPNs across Carroll County. As a public school system, we are seeing and having to simultaneously deal with the lingering effects of the unprecedented lockdown in our country due to COVID-19 and the beginning of sweeping change in public education in Maryland with the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. Both of those are demanding significant changes, and for many, change is difficult. In the last year as CASE President, I have had many opportunities to address concerns that have arisen by communicating and meeting with staff at Central Office. I am grateful to say that these concerns have been addressed in professional and many times collaborative manners. I raise this point because I am of the belief that our school system can achieve great successes through the input of all stakeholders at the county and state level now and in the future. Unfortunately, in the recent past, differences in opinion and beliefs amongst stakeholders have many times been approached in a confrontational and adversarial manner. While there will always be differences, this is our opportunity to model respectful and constructive ways to deal with our differences to the students and children of Carroll County who so desperately need examples of how to considerately and respectfully interact with others and deal with arduous situations. I couldn't be more confident that many C C P S staff members would support this statement with behaviors that have already been seen this year. In speaking of working together, I'm grateful to have been a part of the C C E A CASE team that participated in the Out of the Darkness Walk for Suicide Prevention this past Saturday at Crim Gold Park in Woodbine. This is the second year we have joined forces for a cause that hits close to home for us because of the mental health challenges faced by many students and adults in our county. In closing, it has been disheartening to learn of recent remarks made in our county referencing the teachers' union in the state of Maryland. While C C E A and CASE are separate unions locally, we are both a part of the Maryland State Education Association, which is much more than a teachers' union. The ESPs of Carroll County continue ready to work together with the other stakeholders in our county. I am proud to represent the support professionals in our county who go above and beyond, day in and day out, in support of our students in order to help them achieve success. Carroll County has taken pride in leading by example on many occasions in our state. Let's take advantage of this opportunity to create another one of those situations on an issue that is so critically important for the students and children of our county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Whistler, could you read the sheet I handed you? Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Actually, yeah, it's evening now. Okay. I'm going to read something about Custodial and Maintenance Personnel Recognition Day. And if you didn't know, that is coming up on Tuesday, September 19th. These employees do whatever it takes to keep our buildings clean and well-maintained and to make our schools a safe, clean, and comfortable place to teach and learn. Their work is really vital, and we wouldn't be able to operate our schools safely and efficiently without them. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to thank all of the employees in our Facilities, Maintenance, and Operations Department for their hard work and dedication to our schools. And I hope if there's anyone out there, we have significant numbers of vacancies, and we need you to apply for these positions. We need your help, and we want you to be a part of the C C P S team. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this time, would you like to give your activities and correspondence?
Yes, ma'am. On August 10th, I attended the Family Life Advisory Committee meeting at Central Office. I really appreciate the efforts of those who are departing the group and welcome those incoming members. Everyone associated with this committee has given Carroll's parents what several other counties won't. Opt-out alternatives so students can take the family-friendly version or opt-out altogether of the state's health framework. On August 23rd, I participated in our joint meeting with commissioners and the state delegation. I'm very grateful to our Board of Education staff for generating great ideas and strategies that legislators can use in Annapolis. We can improve education, retain local control, and make efforts to not break the bank at the local level. On August 30th, I was fortunate to tour East Middle with several board colleagues and elected officials. I hope our students and parents are enjoying this new $63 million, I believe, dollar facility. It was great to see so many artifacts and the architectural features from the original facility incorporated and embedded into the new building. If you haven't seen it, you should stop by and take a look. It really is a treasure. Also, on August 30th, I attended the Board of Education Strategy Session, and once again want to thank staff at Central Office for working on this very important topic. Your efforts will help guide our school's systems direction and ensure that we focus on what's important: academic achievement, implementing Blueprint, and erecting key performance indicators that we need to monitor throughout the year to make sure we're on track. On September 5th, I greeted students on their first day of school at Liberty High School, Oklahoma Road Middle, and Carrolltown Elementary. There were so many smiles, and our terrific administrators, teachers, support staff, and bus drivers did a terrific job ensuring everything was ready to go. We're going to have a great school year, thanks to all of you. And finally, I attended the South Carroll Business Association meeting today, September 13th, to watch our very terrific Superintendent Dr. McCabe give business leaders an update on our schools. Our business community will once again play such an important role in helping our students and staff. I really appreciate every earned, every earned, if I could say it right, internship opportunity and every dollar they give to our PTAs, our PTOs, after-school activities, and athletic programs. We cannot do this without the business community, and we really appreciate their help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sebigni.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. Just a couple of quick comments. I do want to remark about the joint meeting between the Board of Ed, the Commissioners, and the Delegates that happened in late August. It was really a fantastic and collaborative discussion that we had, and I'm so glad that we're having those discussions early and often in order to, you know, implement the Blueprint in a fashion that will be beneficial to our schools. So just really want to thank all of the delegates and commissioners that joined us here that evening and for the open conversation and really trying to work towards, how do we make this work for our kids, for our students? Because it really needs to be about student achievement, so I appreciate that focus. Also, want to echo your comments, Mr. Whistler, about the East Middle School Tour. It really is a treasure. Thank you to staff for putting together that tour for several community members. The building truly is a treasure, and it's fantastic that we could give this opportunity to the kids at East Middle, especially the, and the best program as well. It's just really fantastic to see the thought and care that went into that building. It was so well-thought-out and just fantastic accomplishment on the county's part, so just very excited about that. Also, wanted to remark about the Strategic Plan Work Session that we had. Thank you to staff again for the thoughtful consideration behind that. You guys probably know that was, it was something that was near and dear to my heart when I first joined the Board several years ago, getting the prior five-year plan into place, kind of working at, working with SMART goals and really keeping it focused on student achievement. And I think that we're continuing to do that, and we're building, it's a solid foundation right now, or continue to build on that and make it better as we go. And the last comment is about the Family Life Committee meeting. Mr. Whistler, you mentioned that as well. Really good discussion at the last meeting. And again, want to thank the outgoing members for their participation and the significant efforts that they put into trying to preserve parent choice in the county. I did want to give parents in the audience that may either be seated here or watching online, just wanted to give you an update about the opt-out forms that went out, just so that folks are aware. So there was an email that came out from the school system from C C P S at a donotreply@carrollk12.org address, and it came out on August 30th. So it would have gone to any parents that have middle school or high school students taking health classes. So just want to make sure folks are aware and not confused. The changes to the family life framework would not have been impacting elementary schools this year. Elementary schools will take place next year. It's only, so you would not have received that email, nor do you need to worry about the opt-out forms and making that decision. But for middle school and high schools, that did come out on August 30th. So if you have concerns with the state framework, then I would, as one of five Board members, I would urge you to choose option one if you have concerns with that. That is the option that I chose for my children in their health classes. If you do not have concerns, or if you do not return the form, then your child will automatically be enrolled in the state framework version. So just wanted that to be the public service announcements so that everybody's aware and try to remove any confusion around the situation. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And now we will hear from our infamous student rep.
Hello, everyone. I hope that everyone has had a fantastic first two weeks of school. This is a reminder to all students to continue to take care of yourself and get plenty of sleep. Better said than done. Also, be sure to talk to your counselors about any resources they have to offer, especially seniors getting ready for college applications. I'd also love to reiterate that the strategic planning session that we recently had was very valuable, and we learned a lot of valuable information on the Blueprint. On August 31st, I attended the CCSGA Advanced and helped our CCSGA president present a workshop on networking for around 40 students. Thank you to all those who attended. And student involvement in our decision-making process is crucial, and I, along with all Board members, encourage students to be involved in CCSGA and your schools. Let's make sure that this year is a good start. Thank you.
Thank you. We had an incredible first day of school as a former teacher. I know what, it is a very special day, and it was wonderful to see the students returning to school. Of course, I had to go visit a couple of schools that day. I think it was one of the most smoothest openings we have had in many years, and yes, we did have a hiccup or two several days later, but we all recovered and have to understand things always don't go perfect, but everything is up and running. And I would like to thank everyone from Dr. McCabe, everyone in this building, all the educators, maintenance, custodians, IAs, all the support staff, secretaries, nurses, I don't want to forget anybody, but all of our employees, because that's how this operation works. We all have to work together. And I cannot forget, they are not our employees, they are our contractors. They got the buses rolling, the wheels rolled, and they got our students here, and we did not make the papers that morning. So, and I thank all the bus contractors for doing a great job. And I'm going to put on a public service announcement, we still can use more bus drivers. So we will take extras. We need, always need a spare. So please, if you know somebody that's looking for work, I can give you names of certain contractors that definitely can use a few subs, so, and they will help you get their CDLs thanks to us. So just remember that. Okay. And yes, and Dr. Dor, I'm not quite finished yet, but we're going to get to you, Dr. Dorsey, okay? I did have a chance to visit North Carroll Middle School, and I can tell you, that is one of our oldest middle schools around. And I could tell there was a lot of deep cleaning doing over the summer. But when you went to that school that first day, those floors were unbelievable. You looked right, you looked left. They were the shiniest terracing floors that I have seen, and I want to give them a kudos because they, that was unbelievable. And that's not the only year that they have looked like that. So did a fantastic job. And I just want to remind everyone about the Career and Technology Centers Big Country Breakfast on September 23rd from 7:00 to 11:00. And if you've never been there, it's well worth it. And of course, you can call the Career and Tech if you need any information, but it is a very good breakfast and a great cause. 15. $15 for adults, $10 for students, $5 for 6-12. Children under 5 are free. Pancakes, French toast, eggs, sausage, home fries, sausage gravy, biscuits, scrapple. Some of you may not even know what some of this stuff is. Baked apples and their famous pudding and hominy. If you're an old country girl, you know what those last two things are. So anyway, please, it's for a good cause for Career and Tech. I haven't done this public service announcement for a long time, but don't forget your shingle shot. I don't want anybody to ever have to go through that again. It's a series of two. Get it done because for three, almost four months, that was bad, and every night I go to bed and my left ear burns every night still from shingles. So I am telling you, some of you might not think you're old enough to get one, but you better check with your doctors to get your shingle shots because one day it's going to surprise you, just like it did me. And, Dr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mrs. Herbert. First of all, I would certainly like to wish all of our students, faculty, and staff a hearty welcome to this new school year. I've said before that each new year affords us a new beginning, and each new year is always filled with a lot of hope and promise, and my desire is that everyone will be able to make this a productive year and meet your individual goals. A preschooler recently told me that her goal for this year is to make good crafts. She wants to be as creative as she can be, and she added that she wants to sprinkle glitter on as many of her crafts as she can. So I know that some of your goals may be a bit more lofty, but whatever you have set as your goal for the year, may you work hard to achieve it. And as far as my activities are concerned, on August 15th, I had the privilege of attending the Stuff the Bus at Walmart in Eldersburg. It was a very hot day, but it was so invigorating to see and hear the marching bands, the cheerleaders who were there from the various schools, because they really did ignite the crowd to stuff the bus. And it was just great to see shoppers stopping by and picking up lists to see what supplies were needed and then coming out and placing those items on the bus. So again, it was a great day. It was a hot day, as I've said, so I certainly thank the teachers and the leaders of all our student groups who participated. Certainly, Mr. Shockney was there, Mr. O'Neill, Mr. Streaker, and other staff members, and I think Branda and Sandy were manning the welcome table. And then there was the special group of our ELL staff members who stayed on the bus as hot as it was, and the bus wasn't air-conditioned. I don't even think some of the windows seemed to be down. But anyway, they stayed on the bus and as the items were presented to them, they started sorting those donated items so that once they were sorted, they said it would make it easier once they got to Central to place them where they needed to go. So again, we certainly thank the community for supporting this worthwhile event. On the 21st of August, I attended my MAE Equity Meeting where we continued some of our important work that we continue to be involved in. On the 23rd, with my colleagues, I attended our meeting with our state delegates and county commissioners, and I thought, as some of you have already shared, that the ideas on how to move forward with Blueprint, I think some of those ideas that we discussed were great ones, and I think we're going to see some value certainly because of that discussion and that meeting. On the 30th, I too, along with some of my other Board members, took the tour of our beautiful new East Middle School. And this new school comes with all the bells and whistles of modern technology, design, furniture, and equipment, as well as some of those classic mementos from the former Westminster High School slash East Middle School. So I, again, am grateful to everyone who was involved in the planning, the design, and the construction of this facility, and I know it's going to serve Westminster well for years to come. So I am just very proud to say that it's in my hometown and that we've got a group of students who are going to be enjoying the facility for years to come. And finally, on the 30th, I also attended our work session on our strategic plan, and I agree with some of the comments that have been made. We certainly had a good discussion and feedback, and we thank the staff for helping to steer us so that we can, again, begin implementing our new strategic plan. So that's the end of my comments as far as my activities have been concerned for the month. So thank you very much, and I'll mute myself.
Thank you. At this time, Dr. McCabe will do her report.
This evening, I'd like to thank everyone who worked so hard to ensure that our schools and classrooms were ready for the return of our students last Tuesday. As always, much activity occurred during the summer months in order to have everything in place for the first day of school, and I'm grateful to everyone for their efforts. Despite the excessive heat, we had a great first day. It's always fun to visit a few of our schools on opening day to welcome our students. This year, I had the opportunity to host State Board of Education member Dr. Holly Wilcox for a visit to East Middle School. It was very exciting to see students and staff on their first day in the brand-new building. I'd like to give a special thanks to our maintenance and operations employees for working tirelessly to keep our buildings comfortable during the heat and for handling the issues that did arise at a few of our schools. Our athletics programs also were affected by the extreme heat last week. We delayed all practices and contests until 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday and Wednesday and 5:00 p.m. on Thursday. Our schools also worked with game officials and opposing teams to implement additional water breaks within the contests to allow students to properly hydrate. Due to the later start times, some contests had to be postponed until later in the season. On another note, I would like to welcome our 200 new teachers to Carroll County Public Schools. I had the pleasure of meeting many of them and bringing remarks on the first day of new teacher orientation last month. We are very happy to have them in our school system and wish them well. And in closing, thanks again to everyone for a successful opening of school and best wishes for a great year.
Thank you. And now, we will have a presentation for the MCAP data. Please come forward.
At our work session on the next strategic plan, we shared that we had received our MCAP data from the state and promised a presentation at this meeting. As with all data releases, we have some strengths and some clear areas for growth and improvement. The work is already underway to address those needs and incorporate them into our school improvement plans. Mr. Shockney and the team are here to present the data and also to share how we use these outcomes to inform instruction and school improvement.
Excuse me. First of all, I need to congratulate Dr. Hart and Mr. Warnock. If any of you have had the chance to pick up the Carroll magazine, there are two really good articles about our employees, and I think you all need to take the time to find that magazine and read the article because it's very complimentary on both of you. And again, thank you all and for all your hard work, but I just wanted to reiterate, people should take the time and find that Carroll magazine.
And, Mrs. Herbert?
Yes. Oh, okay, we don't have a picture of you now. Hold on. Do we lose her now on that?
I just wanted to say that Pam Myers was also included in the.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks for the correction. I've lost your picture.
That's okay.
Hold on, Dr. Dorsey, we've lost you.
That's fine.
No, it's not. It is not fine. You're part of the team. Okay, we're going to get you there. Okay, now you're back. All right, all right. Thank you.
I was just commenting that Pam Myers was also included.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that correction. Yes, I taught her, like half of you.
Of course you did.
Yes, okay. All right, here we go.
Good evening, Board members. Very excited to go over our 2022-2023 MCAP data. We alluded to today's presentation at our last strategic work session on the strategic plan. So we're very excited. I'll briefly turn things over to Dr. Hart. I'd also like to introduce Ms. Christine Hill, who is new to the team as well, and Mr. Caleb Yardal as well, kind of rounding out that team, and they're going to work us through our MCAP data. We have a slide at the end for questions, but as we go, if you have any questions that arise, please feel free to ask away. I'll turn things over to the team.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Superintendent, or Superintendent, Dr. McCabe. Thank you so much for having us on behalf of the three of us and those fine instructional leaders that we have behind us. Thank you for having us this evening. We're going to share some information in reference to our MCAP, and we're going to begin with our objective, which is we're going to review the achievement data from the 2022-2023 MCAP administration, compare results with the 2021-2022 MCAP administration, and identify strengths, areas of focus, and next steps. We're going to use a presentation and discussion format.
We're going to use a presentation and discussion format. Thank you, Mr. Shockney, to monitor student progress, provide multiple pathway opportunities for student success, and to inform decision-making. We're going to begin with just some brief information in reference to the MCAP administration. The MCAP administration was administered to all students in grades 3 through 8, and students enrolled in Algebra I, English 10, Government, and Biology during the 2022-2023 school year. The fall administration was December of 2022 through January of 2023, and the spring administration was March 2023 through May 2023. As far as the MCAP performance levels, we know that the levels were 1 through 4 for this particular administration, with the lowest being the 1, which was a beginning learner, and our Level 4 was a distinguished learner. Please note that proficiency levels did not change in comparison to the 2021 to the 2022 administration, and we can share more information for that as well. We're going to begin with some brief MSD overall observations, and this information is directly from the MSD 2023 MCAP press release. The statewide results show notable improvement in literacy and mathematics, with literacy results surpassing pre-pandemic performance. Across all grades, substantial percentages of students were on the cusp, and they had an average of 1 to 3 additional correct answers that would have made a difference as far as the literacy and mathematics and their proficiency levels. In the state, the average was between 16% and 22% for students in ELA who would need those extra correct answers in order to be proficient, where in Carroll County, the results would have been, we needed 16.8%, so we fell right within that range. Also with the state, in reference to the mathematics, for students on the cusp of proficiency, it was 11% to 17%, and for our Carroll County students, the average was 21.6%. A lower percentage of our students are scoring at the lowest performance levels. A lower percentage of students are scoring at the lowest performance level in literacy and mathematics. And then as far as our subgroups, the data shows that there are encouraging trends across data, and I think you'll be pleased when we show the data for Carroll County Public Schools as far as the growth that is starting to take place. In reference to the hopeful trend from the state's perspective, the targeted math interventions that our educational staff are using are beginning to take root, and they are starting to see a result and increase proficiency across all grade levels. Ms. Hill will share the 2023 MCAP overall observations in ELA, Mathematics, and Science. She and Mr. Yardal will share MCAP results and comparison data for ELA, Mathematics, and Science. And then I will come back again and share one collaborative overall observations for Carroll County Public Schools. Mr. Warnock will, and Mr. Shockney both, will share next steps for Carroll County Public Schools.
Okay. Good evening. So we'll begin with ELA.
All right. It's September 2nd.
Thank you. All right. Throughout the state, student proficiency rates for the MCAP ELA are at their highest in nearly a decade, with students' literacy results surpassing pre-pandemic performance. For students in grade 3 specifically, the proficiency rate in literacy has reached a nine-year high of 48%. Although the results for the MCAP math assessments have not yet returned to pre-pandemic levels, 25% of students in grades 3 through 8 combined were proficient in mathematics in school year 2022 to 2023, and this surpasses the 22% of students scoring proficient in school year 2021 to 2022. For the Algebra I assessment, 17% of students were proficient, which is an increase over the 14% of students scoring proficient in the school year 2021 to 2022. And for science, throughout the state, grade 5 science scores have exceeded pre-pandemic levels, with proficiency increasing nearly 4% from 31% in school year 2021 to 2022 to 35% in school year 2022 to 2023. Fewer grade 8 students scored proficient on the 2023 MCAP science assessment, with 26% of students reaching proficiency compared to 35% in the previous school year. So I will now turn the presentation over to Mr. Yardal to discuss the CCPS MCAP ELA data.
We'll start looking into ELA comparison data released by the state overall, then look at how we perform within our county per grade level and show proficiencies for student groups as well as rankings when compared to other school districts within the state. Here is a screenshot of a slide presented to our State Board of Education last month that ranks school districts by proficiency for ELA grades 3 through 8. As you can see, Carroll County ranks second in the state with a proficiency percentage of 64%, whereas 47% of students statewide are proficient in these grade levels. Here is another slide provided by MSD showing how school districts rank in ELA 10. Carroll County ranks fourth in the state with an overall proficiency percentage of 68%, while the percentage of students scoring proficient statewide is 54%. Here is a graph representing Carroll County's overall proficiency for each grade level when compared to the state and results from the prior year. The blue bar represents CCPS proficiency percentage from the 21-22 MCAP administration. The green bar represents CCPS proficiency percentage from the most recent 22-23 MCAP administration, and the gray bar represents the state's proficiency percentage from 22-23. The chart next to our graph represents the number of total test takers for each ELA MCAP assessment for your reference. We have small proficiency decreases from 1 to 3% in grades 3 and 5 when compared to the prior year, but we see gains in all other grade levels anywhere from 1 to 15%, with grade 8 being our largest increase. Here is a graph representing race and ethnic student group proficiencies in ELA, comparing data from the 21-22 and 22-23 MCAP administrations. The green bar represents the percentage of students proficient, and the orange represents the percentage of students that are not proficient. We see an increase in proficiency for student groups African-American, Asian, Hispanic, multiracial, and white of between 3% to 6%, with our African-American and multiracial students seeing the greatest gain in proficiency. We have decreases in proficiency of 1 to 4% amongst our American Indian, Alaskan Native, and Hawaiian Pacific Islander student groups. Again, on the right, you'll find a chart containing the total number of test takers for each ethnic student group for your reference. Here is a graph representing the proficiency percentage of our farm students per assessment with the same legend labels as our overall graph. We increase in proficiency from the prior year in almost every grade level with growth anywhere between 2 to 14%, grade level 8 having our largest increase. Our only decrease is in grade 5 of 3%. On average, our farm students have about a 20% decrease in proficiency when compared to our overall results.
Mr. Yardal, can I, thank you for walking us through this. I just had a question about, so the ELA 5 was the only, the 5th grade was. the fifth grade was the only cohort that went down. Do we have any suppositions as to what might be driving that?
We also have, I forgot to mention this earlier, but we have staff from our curriculum instruction department available. Ms. Dale, would you like to come up? And you can use a podium if you'd like.
Okay, so someone, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, yeah, we had just a few, I think it was three percentage point drop for the one grade level. And really, I believe that it's a small drop. And the plan moving forward is not just for fifth grade. I don't have, you know, any guesses as to why it's a couple of, you know, percentage points down. But we do know that our third, fourth, and fifth grade students, although we are much higher than the state, we have a lot of work to do with our third, fourth, and fifth grade scores and giving our students where they need to be. So we're, we have a plan for that that I won't go into now. But for a couple of percentage points, I, I, I think we are staying the course. But I think we also have to really start looking at those cusp kids, as we were talking about earlier, because those students are the ones in three, four, and five that we're really just talking about a couple of maybe multiple choice questions, some, some work in writing. I think we stand to see the biggest gains from that moving forward for third, fourth, and fifth.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, and this is very exciting news. I mean, seeing all the, all the breakdowns of the groups and really seeing improvement from all areas.
Yeah, and the subgroups was very encouraging, almost all.
And I want to thank you, because I can remember the meeting with just Donna and I, and we raked you all over the coals. And we have seen, and, and it was just one of those things that had to be done. And thank you for doing such a great job and picking up the ball and running with it from then on. Thanks a lot.
Just curious also, you know, with the dividend, I'm just curious if there will be a huge dividend with us, you know, hiring those 120-something more teachers.
Yeah.
And placing those resources there.
Yeah, we, we have a lot of new teachers, as you know, that we've hired, a lot of inexperienced. But we have a, a solid plan working with our administrators, as well as bringing in the mentors and the interventionists that we've hired. The biggest piece to that is to make sure that we are all on the same page, looking at the same data, our lead and lag measures, as well as making sure that all of those people have the training that they need for all of our interventions that we're putting in, that are now in place, really pre-K through five.
Yeah, my eyes are really on seeing if you can close that gap between the Farms and the, you know, the standard students and also the minority demographics, you know, seeing if we can improve those, yeah.
But we need to continue.
We have big hopes that that money will turn into real, real huge returns academically for the kids.
And I got to say this. I don't like to use the word gap. We need to bring the bottom up. That's what I always say. Yep, and I do, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as this ties to the strategic plan, we've always had that conversation over the last several years. It's that, you know, if you have a gap, you don't want to close the gap by doing this. You want everybody to go up and this group to come up faster. And that's exactly what we're seeing. So that's very exciting.
Thank you.
And I'll put in a word concerning that again. I mean, we've always called it a gap, so to speak, because we were looking at, you know, where the high-performing students were in relationship to where the lower performing students were. So it was really that, that space in between. But, you know, I, I hear what you're saying. It's not that we certainly want to hold anyone back to try to lessen that space that's in between. We want everybody to certainly move forward. But again, we do need to show that the lower performing students are certain to begin to make a lot of gains as well. And again, we've always had our FARM students as, as a target population.
Yes, and if we're moving them all up, then we're all moving up together, and especially for those cusp kids.
Right. And they're, like you said, Mrs. Dale, they're the ones that, again, we'll see the greatest gains as far as, you know, overall performance once we can just give them that little nudge that they need.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
The graph we see here represents the proficiency of students with disabilities per grade level with the same legend labels. Anywhere you find a less than or equal to 5%, protects students from being easily identifiable due to a lower proficiency percentage. This practice of censoring sensitive student data is consistent with that of the state. You'll find more cases of this displayed in later slides. Compared to our earlier slides, we see more of a variety of decreases in proficiency within the student group between 2% to 5% in grades three, four, five, and 10. It's also important to note that even though we've improved in proficiency in grade eight from the prior year, we are still 2% under what is considered the state average, and 1% under the state average in ELA 10. We find our largest increases in proficiency in grades six and seven of 5% each. These charts represent how we rank when compared to other school districts for each assessment in student groups, Farms, Students with Disabilities, and English Learners. An asterisk displayed either means that proficiency was less than or equal to 5% or the student population within a particular assessment was 10 or less, which is also consistent with state practice. We tend to rank lower in the state in ELA eight and 10. An example of this can be found with our Students with Disabilities, as we saw earlier, ranking 14th and 12th. And we rank fairly high overall between grade levels ELA four through seven. Reviewing our state rankings for student groups in this data helps us to see our strengths and areas needing further improvement. These charts represent how Carroll County ranks within the state in race and ethnic student groups within each grade level. American Indian, Alaskan Native, and Hawaiian Pacific Islander ranking data was not provided to us by the state due to smaller student populations amongst all LEAs. However, we still wanted to represent these two student groups on this slide. A few key highlights to make note of includes our first-place ranking in almost every grade level with our African American students, with students identifying as multiracial and white having lower rankings by comparison. Even though we rank fairly high with our Hispanic student population, our proficiency percentages still leaves room for improvement. At this time, Ms. Hill will provide you all with the math portion of the MCAP data.
Okay, so this screenshot provided by MSD shows the performance by local education agencies on the mathematics grade three through eight assessments for school year 2022 to 2023. Statewide, the percentage of students scoring proficient on the math grades three through eight assessments was 25% for school year 2022 to 2023. And Carroll County Public Schools proficiency on the mathematics exam is 40%, putting us in second place. This screenshot provided by MSD shows the performance by local education agencies on the Algebra I assessment for school year 2022 to 2023. Statewide, the percentage of students scoring proficient on the Algebra I assessment was 17%. And Carroll County Public Schools proficiency in Algebra I is 22%, putting us in ninth place. So looking specifically at our students' overall performance on the math grades three through eight and Algebra I assessments, we see increases in performance from school year 2021 to 2022 to school year 2022-23 in grade three by 1%, in grade four by 5%, in grade five by 2%, and in grade eight by 10%. And this means that our students nearly doubled in proficiency for grade eight. Grade six saw a decrease in performance by 1%. Grade seven decreased by 3%. And Algebra I students decreased by 4% in overall performance. So now we'll begin to look at our student groups starting with race and ethnicity. As you can see, our African American, Hispanic, and white student populations increased in proficiency in school year 2021 to 22 to school year 2022 to 23 by a range of 1% to 3%. Our multiracial student population maintained at 31% proficiency in the same time period. We do see a decrease in proficiency ranging from 1% to 3% for our American Indian, Alaskan Native, Asian, and Hawaiian Pacific Islander student groups. Looking at our Free and Reduced Meals, or Farms, student group, there were gains in proficiency for grades three through eight, ranging from 1% to 8% increases. There was a 3% decrease in proficiency for Algebra I Farms students from 2022 to 23. However, they still scored 2% above the state MCAP average. Now we'll look at our students with disabilities. And as was mentioned before, the columns marked with less than or equal to 5% means that we cannot provide data because it would make it easily identifiable for those individual students because the population's either less than 10 students or less than 5% of students met with proficiency. So as you can see, there was a 1% increase in students scoring proficient in grade three and a 4% increase in students scoring proficient in grade five. There was a 4% decrease for students in grade four. However, they still scored 6% above the state proficiency average. So now we're going to look at the state rankings for our Farms, Students with Disabilities, and English Learners student groups. The asterisk and indicator, again, of less than or equal to 5% for our students with disabilities and English learners implies that the data would easily identify a student because there are less than 10 students or less than 5% of students met with proficiency. Our Farms students scored in the top 10 with grades four and five ranking second in the state and grades three and eight ranking third. Our students with disabilities in grade five were ranked fourth in the state, and students in grades three and four were ranked fifth in the state. Our English learners also performed well with students in grade four ranking second in the state, while students in grade three and five ranked third.
Ms. Hill, before we move on to the, the further slides, I'm, I'm still back on slide 22 where we're looking at the, the Farm scores for math for grades three to eight and Algebra I. There seems to be a big cliff there, right? Like, so even though the, the proficiency levels aren't as high as we would like them to be with the 41 and the 34, there's a precipitous drop off for the progressive grades. Is that, is that due to the, do we think that that's due to what we talked about at the strategic plan session? We're not having the, the spiraling nature of?
Most definitely. If he wants to come up and jump in, at any point in time, feel free to, to do so. But I, but like we had mentioned before, and if any of our, of our community didn't hear, our, our curriculum is a mastery curriculum in mathematics, which is, which builds on one topic after another. If, with a student struggles with a topic or sometimes structurally, we don't, we were not as successful with the topic, that, that creates gaps. And over time, those, those gaps can grow and have even more of a, of a significant impact. But, but I do think that this mirrors our, our local data. This is our overall performance in mathematics, especially at the secondary level, is something that we identified when, when we were discussing our next strategic plan. It's something that was very important to us that we wanted to be able to, to prioritize. I'll turn things over to?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yes, so our, our intervention plan that gets down to the individual student level that we analyze at our, at our buildings, that's going to address those gaps for the individual student groups. So we could talk more about the interventions and our next steps. But yes, trying to analyze the data down to the individual student in our, in our collaborative teams is going to be where we're, where we're going to see us filling the need to improve the scores for those, those student groups.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, we will look at the state ranking of our student groups in terms of race and ethnicity. Again, the asterisk and indicator of less than or equal to 5% for our American Indian, Alaskan Native, and Hawaiian Pacific Islander groups implies that the data would easily identify a student because there are less than 10 students or less than 5% of students achieve proficiency. Our African American students in grades three through six ranked first in the state, while students in grades seven and our Algebra I students ranked second. By comparison, Asian, Hispanic, and multiracial student groups ranked lower in state standings for Algebra I. Our Asian students in grades three, I'm sorry, in grade three ranked first in the state, while grades five and eight ranked second. Our Hispanic students in grade five ranked second in the state, and our students identifying as multiracial in grade four ranked second. I'll now turn the presentation back to Mr. Yardal to present the MCAP Science data.
I'm sorry, and I keep interrupting, I'm sorry. But just before we move off of math, I mean, so the, the results for ELA were looking very encouraging. And, you know, the math was the part that was kind of disheartening, right? And we think we understand the cause of that. How do we build something like that into? Are, are you looking to, Mr. Shachny, to build something into the strategic plan specifically for the math measures? Like, what's a reasonable amount of time in term, to kind of get at the spiraling nature of catching the kids back up, right? So I guess, you know, they're missing some of the fundamental concepts over time, and then it starts to kind of fall apart. How do you, how do you, what's a reasonable amount of time to kind of go back and get those kids back to a basic level that they can start to continue and get, improve again?
Great question, but I'm going to turn it over to?
Yeah, thanks again, yeah. So with the strategic plan as the CCR goal, this is a perfect goal for us for what we're, what we're doing with trying to get our kids caught up and to increase the proficiency. Because for CCR, the first chance pass is the Algebra I assessment. So when we're looking at, like, a high school goal for, for math proficiency, it's the perfect goal because it's going to allow us[1550.20] goal because it's going to allow us to measure our students proficiency in mathematics throughout their high school career. So with the spiraling nature, our IXL Math Intervention Program that we've embedded both at middle and high school level, we're seeing some really great, great gains with the platform. You know, don't want to necessarily say a specific year amount, but we're seeing multiple year gains within given years. So, you know, it's possible, it's very, it's very possible that we can get these kids caught up much faster than anticipated without an intervention platform. So this is our second, second year. We started the platform last year just in the middle school for our academic and foundational classes. We've expanded it to include all students at the middle school in conceptual algebra and Algebra One at the high school level. So we're, we're rapidly expanding the intervention platform and we anticipate that to do a, improve the scores for sure and get the students caught up.
And also, Mr. Milkie and team have also developed unit assessments to support the, to support the curriculum. They also implemented common end of course assessments. We have good data from that. That data reflects our, our achievement on MCAP, which is a good thing because that's an overall summative evaluation, not only of our students and their learning, but also our instruction as well, too. So a big piece of this data along with great local data at the end of the course and then benchmarking along the way will also help us really evaluate our curriculum and our instruction. Because we want to make sure, obviously, we've got a great foundation in our curriculum. We also want to make sure that our written curriculum is our delivered curriculum as well. So in addition to intervention, we'll also continue to improve our, our first pass instruction based upon the data here also, you know, in coordination with our local assessment data as well, too. So that, although we have an immediate need for a specific, you know, students at this point in time, we also want to correct our instruction if that's a part of this so we don't get in this position in the future. Obviously, through intervention, we'll address it at the individual student level. But as always, and this happens not only in mathematics, but in all of our curricular areas, we're always revising, we're always using whatever data we have to be able to evaluate the effectiveness of our curriculum and our instruction as well, and we make changes accordingly.
I will have to say one thing. My granddaughter was in the third grade during COVID and I understand how important these concepts are because I sat there at that table with that child and I made her listen and I didn't make her, but I'm telling you, she did what she was supposed to do. But I saw many days, girls rolling around in their beds with their stuffed animals, boys playing with their, in their underwear, playing with their dogs. And let me tell you, they did not get concepts that year. And it's, it's one based on the other on the other. So I'm not taking up for you, but we've got to get these up.
Yeah, and we will, and we will.
But that did, that's, that's the, that's what we saw.
And if it's okay, I just would like to give Mr. Milkie a kudos because he has spent more time with this team in the last few weeks than anybody else has put together.
I'm sure.
And a lot of it is self-initiated and so kudos to him for that. And with that, he's been talking about specifics of the data and trends in the data. And he's also been running ideas in reference to some of the professional development because we can have the curriculum, but we need the professional development piece to help support our teachers to make sure that the instruction is taking place. So I just wanted to throw in that kudos to him for that because he's been spending a lot of time with us.
But I do take notice that Mr. Hicks is over there just smiling away.
Absolutely.
I have no idea why. He's thinking January is a great month, but he is just sitting over there smiling and not, just smiling from ear to ear. I don't know if anybody noticed that or not, but I did. Thank you. And thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And it will pay off. Ask Stephanie.
Now we'll look at grade five and grade eight science comparison data. Looking at rankings provided to us from MSD, Carroll County ranks first in science grade five with a proficiency of 54.1%, while statewide, the percentage of students scoring proficient is 34.5%. In grade eight science, Carroll County ranks fifth with 36.8% proficiency when compared to other school districts. Statewide proficiency is at 26.4%. When we look at overall performance, we see that grade five science has an increase of 9% proficiency from 2122 to 2223 MCAP administration, while science grade eight has a decrease of 6%, but has a higher proficiency level than that of the state. Looking at student groups by race and ethnicity, we see a decrease in proficiency within our African-American and Asian student populations between 5% to 7%, while seeing an increase between 2% to 3% in our Hispanic, multiracial, and white populations. Since our population sizes for American Indian, Alaskan Native, and Hawaiian Pacific Islander in grade five and eight science combined is less than or equal to 10 students, we do not provide student data due to results being easily identifiable. When looking into our Farm student group, we see an increase in proficiency percentage from the prior year in grade five science of 6% and we see a decrease in grade eight science of 4%. When looking at our Students with Disabilities student group, our proficiency percentage doubled in grade five from 8% to 16%. We see a decrease in science grade eight, however, the proficiency percentage is less than or equal to 5% and same goes for the state. Looking at state ranking in student groups Farms, Students with Disabilities, and English Learners, grade five has generally higher rankings. Grade eight science is followed by an asterisk in two student groups, but it also follows the same trend as many other school districts with 5% or less students proficient in these specific student categories. When looking at ranking data by race and ethnicity, we rank fairly high in almost every student group except for students who identify as white in science grade eight. However, it's also important to note that our proficiency percentage is particularly low for student groups Hispanic and African-American despite ranking fairly high compared to the state. Now I'll pass this next part over to Dr. Hart, who will provide you all with overall observations.
Just some quick overall observations in the sake of time. We want to recognize that overall, we went very well in comparison to other districts in our results. However, us, the team, the leadership team, the curriculum team, the content supervisors and their supports and assistant supervisors and coordinators, building administrators and teachers have been collaborating to plan and address student needs. For us, it goes beyond those great rankings that you see because we know that behind every one of those numbers, when it comes to the percentages, there are students that are either successful or not successful. And so we want to focus more so on the percentages and what they actually represent beyond the actual rankings. In comparison to the 2021, 2022 ELA MCAP results, most student groups demonstrated an increase in proficiency and/or rankings. And at ELA, we had a slight decrease in grades three and five and we have surpassed or maintained pre-pandemic levels as experienced statewide. Our math scores have not returned to pre-pandemic levels and the proficiency rates increased by up to 5% in grades three through five and in grade eight, we increased by 10%. Our Farm student group increased in all grade levels except in our Algebra One assessment. Our grade five post-pandemic science scores have increased each year of the assessments and our students with disabilities in grade five proficiency increased from 8% to 16%. But again, we understand that we still have work to do. We saw a decrease in our eighth grade science proficiency levels in comparison to the 2122 results. And Mr. Warnick will share next steps for ELA, math, and science.
So you're going to see a lot of similarities and commonalities across the next steps. In language arts, we're really focusing on that triangulating the local and state data, especially in our grades three through five, to ensure that we're providing those flexible groups and those intervention supports to the students that actually need it with the correct and appropriate intervention. We're also ensuring that all of our teachers are trained on the science of reading, skills that really dig deep down into understanding what reading looks like and how to provide those skills and that teaching necessary to our students, especially those are students who are ESOL, special ed, and are economically disadvantaged students because often we see those students struggling a little bit more in those areas. We want to ensure that all of our local assessments are revised and that our benchmarks are aligned to the MCAP assessments. We look at our assessments each year based on our data to make sure that both the questions and that what we're teaching are aligned so that we're getting the results that we need through our benchmarks to model what our MCAP results may be. As well as we want to make sure that we're analyzing and sharing that MCAP results with our teachers, with our administrators, so that they're able to make the best, you know, improvements within their planning and delivery of instruction. And then we want to ensure that we're adopting and implementing the learning strategies based on current research for writing because we find that our students sometimes struggle in writing, especially at the secondary level. And we know that MCAP has a lot of writing, you know, within the assessment. So we want to ensure that our students are comfortable with, with writing fluency. For math, we want to revise and update again our common assessments as Mr. Milkie spoke to, to ensure that we, that they are aligned to our instruction, to ensure that they're aligned to what our teachers are teaching as well as the assessments, MCAP. We want to implement collaborative teaching and co-teaching models between all of our classrooms, especially our new teaching staff that we have on within our, our comp ed schools. We want to utilize ALIDE data with our administrators, again, and our teachers to really ensure that our small group instruction is meeting the standards that they need. And we want to ensure that we are expanding our interventions to all our students who may need that, both at the elementary level with bridges and secondary with IXL, since we have the supports now with our teachers to provide that. And then we want to implement individualized plans aligned with Blueprint and CCR for all of our students, especially our high school students, though, so that they are proficient within math this year. And then for science, we're going to continue to rise again our common assessments, ensuring that they're aligned to the National Next Generation Science Standards and the MISA Assessment. Strengthen collaboration again between the elementary and secondary science to ensure that there is that coherence and that understanding so once they move to from fifth grade to sixth grade, that they still have those science skills that they've built upon them, that they continue to succeed. Again, focusing on that professional learning that builds teacher capacity because we know that science sometimes in math is very specialized. We want to make sure that our teachers has, have that availability and that understanding of how to teach those specific skills to our students. We're looking at that coherency across the K-12 spectrum within the science standards and again, providing that appropriate support for teachers in, to model lessons, to be able to support instructions with all our students who may be struggling.
All right, and I'll wrap this up on the last slide, which we've covered most already, but just wanted to reiterate a couple of things. Our staff and Mr. Warnick's department in curriculum instruction work hard globally disaggregating the data for a county and how well we do, but also are instrumental in helping our schools break down their individual data. So as soon as this data, we released this data not too long ago to our schools, they are very anxious to get it because they've spent their summer developing their school improvement plans and they were anxiously awaiting the data to kind of cross and compare to their strategies and their targets and their goals that they've identified to make sure that everything's aligned. So currently, they've been in the process and they're probably still wrapping up and making those tweaks and changes to their school improvement plans. Remember, those are the plans that connect, connect the school obviously to our greater systemic goals and plans, but really that's where the rubber meets the road and what they're doing specifically at the school level and at the team level and at the teacher level within the building. Our staff then is, again, just like we had mentioned earlier, evaluating the effectiveness of their curriculum, their instruction, their assessment, they're making changes, they're tweaking interventions, they're identifying students for intervention, but they're also looking at how can they improve their instruction. And that is the beauty of all this work and the collaboration that exists in Carroll County Public Schools. Our teachers, our teams of teachers are working together, they're working with their support staff. Our staff from curriculum and instruction are working back with them to make sure that we are making modifications based upon all of this. And then again, obviously, as we move forward, they're going to progress monitor with those goals that they've identified at the school level. I know they're, they're all probably all anxiously awaiting next year's data, obviously, to see where they've grown and they've, and improved. We hope that we'll continue to get data in a timely manner so we can do that analysis early. The earlier we do that in the summer, just from experience being a principal, the earlier you can do that school improvement planning really helps. So when you're wrapping up that school year, to be able to have the data to get right into it, either right at the end of the school year or ideally in that early part of the summer makes all the difference because then it gives you time to strategize and plan and plan out the professional learning that happens in our schools. Our principals develop tremendous professional learning opportunities. It's all based and grounded in that school improvement plan. I'll put in a plug, we could always use a little bit more time for, for professional learning and development, that's important. We've also recognized we have lots of new staff as well. We need to get the expertise from our veterans and our staff that have been doing this a while into the hands of the, of the, of our new teachers. So obviously, anytime we can have for professional learning is always a good thing. And with that, I'll pause and any questions?
Ms. Savigny. So, Mr. Shockney, thanks for the comments at the end about the timing of the data as well. I know, you know, we had issues with that two years ago with getting the data from the state, you know, with the post-pandemic, trying to get it in a timely fashion to, to be able to do anything with that data. And this year, we got it quicker than last year, but still at the end of August, right? It was kind of the timeframe. And at that point, it's still kind of late, right, for the schools to be able to prepare for the upcoming school year, right? Do we have an indication, do we think that, that we'll be getting on a better cycle from the state maybe that, you know, we could start getting it towards the early, earlier in the summer so that we have the summer to plan for that?
I'll defer to the team. I don't know if a timeline has been identified, but I will always be optimistic that we will continue to get that data, data even earlier.
A little bit earlier every time, okay.
I think of previous iterations of assessments that we went through, we went through the transition to Park, for example, similar structure, but every year, that return of data seemed to get, you know, more efficient over time. With the requirement for some of our end of course assessments, MSD has identified a benchmark and I don't want to quote it because I know it just, it changed or shortened for the better and the turnaround after the students take the two new end of course assessments that will be part of a student's final grade, which will be the, the, the government and then MISA, MCAP assessments. That's going to be 20% of the student's final grade for our incoming or for this year's ninth grade students beginning. That will be a requirement. So they, it's a matter of, what's the turnaround on days? Is it 10 days? I want to say it's 10 days. It's 10 days on the turnaround in which we should have data back. So I think if they can, as proficiency grows and being able to do that, because we need that data right away to be able to determine a student's final grade. But I'm optimistic then that there's hope then that in our other assessed, eight assessed areas, we'll be able to get that, that data even sooner. But the sooner we can, the sooner we can get it into the hands of our staff. Again, being able to, in a perfect world, if we could have that data by the end of the school year or at the start, you know, the early phases of the summer, that makes all the difference and just gives that natural time when school improvement, you know, evaluation of the previous year, strategizing, development of the, of the new plan, that's just an ideal time to have the, have the MCAP data.
Assuming that our local assessments are fairly well aligned to the MCAPs, then we should be able to use our local assessments and have that data immediately available.
Most definitely. And there's tremendous, you know, there's tremendous weight and value in that local assessment data. And the folks sitting in the, in the audience today have been working very hard to make sure that we have, you know, very good, very aligned local assessments. And as always, it's always an evolution. We're always evolving and making the assessments better and more, you know, fairly evaluative of what it is that we expect our students to be able to know and do.
Okay. Did we see similar results? Like is there, is there a definite correlation between the results that we see on our local assessments with what we see on the MCAPs?
Anecdotally, yes. I think there are definite times where we see patterns where if we do well or if we struggle, it's also reflective in the MCAP. And I think the more we, the longer a local assessment exists, I think the more valid that becomes as an indicator of success. I think of earlier on when we developed the comprehension benchmark assessment, that became a very clear indicator of success on MCAP. And that assessment evolved over time, over, over many years of its administration in, in our elementary schools. But again, as, as time went on, we, you know, we revised that assessment, it became even, even more effective of an evaluation of our, of our student progress as our curriculum then also revises. It's not just changing the assessment, it's changing the curriculum, it's changing the instruction, and then obviously, when we do those things, how we, you know, what we're measuring needs to change as well.
Dr. Dorsey.
Yes, I was just going to comment, following up with what was said earlier about how, you know, when you look at the data, it's really, we need to track it back to the individual students and, you know, it's really powerful to do that. And I think at the school level, one of the most powerful things that we do is, you know, once we have that data and once we're taking a look at it, you know, just in teams or in groups of teachers, just to have that discussion, why does our data look like this? And it's just really enlightening with some of the thoughts and ideas that staff members come up with. And then again, we use that as a springboard to make some, some goals and some plans for how we're going to, you know, improve the data. But I agree, getting it at the student level is most important.
Thank you. I, I'm going to take credit for getting it earlier because I think the state is, I'm being good. I think the state has heard my vocal opinion many, many, many months, so thank you for that. Number two, I am really glad to hear that you're helping and mentoring with those new teachers because we have an awful lot of new teachers and we don't want any lag because of inexperience. These educators are here and they're new to our system. So I want them to have as much help as they can, as educators, so that they know the Carroll County way. And number three, we want to make sure everybody's teaching the curriculum. And I see people shaking their heads and agreeing with me. Yes, we need to teach the curriculum. And she's even shaking her head. So I think I'm on to something. But no, it's very important to bring all these new educators along.
Bring all these new educators along.
Oop, little bit of an echo.
And our, and our new educators are also great sources of information. They are typically, you know, not too far removed from, from their formal training and we can learn from them as well. So it's a, it's a great opportunity.
Thank you, everybody. And now we will move on to the construction report. And before we even do anything, and Dr. McCabe doesn't know I'm going to do this, but Mr. Marsh, could you come up to the podium, please? I will tell you, not only did we see the tour of the East Middle School, but this man went above and beyond. We had to do a, it was, you had to do a video?
Correct.
Okay, with, for the Historical Society. But this man went above and beyond, got a drone, and did an unbelievable video. And along with that, by dumb luck, he met Mr. Sell at Olivia's up in Littlestown and he was my choral director. And he changed the music, he went to his house several times, got vinyl records that we all sang, and I will tell you, I am singing on that video, but I will tell you, that was just wonderful. And everyone should go take time, sit down, and view that video of the old and the new and how it all worked together. And I will say, those pieces that they incorporated are just astonishing and they are very, it was all very well thought of. But where did the marble steps get to?
Marble steps were not saved.
Okay.
Yeah, it was too hard to take them out.
Right.
Correct. They would be destroyed taking those out.
Right, okay. And people have asked me that. But I, but I wanted to give you a kudos because no one else messaged it and I was hoping they wouldn't. But now I, I didn't want to say it in my citizen's participation, but I got you there. So, but no, it is really, really exemplary.
Well, I'm glad you liked it. One thing that I also wanted to point out that the teachers do a great job in the new end, of course, the old, that you'll see through the video is the, the positive messaging throughout.
It was just fantastic.
It's really amazing to see that and that's what caught me when I was-
I didn't know that was going to be part of your job, that you had to do that, but you know, sometimes you've got to do what you've got to do in your job description, but it was excellent.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Before we get into any other details about East specifically, I just wanted to highlight the status of some of our major undertakings. This is a time we typically discuss the successful progress on East Middle School and Career and Tech, but I also want to note that Mr. Prokop and his team also had success with other summer projects, including the Spring Garden HVAC system, relocating the portable classroom to Friendship Valley, and Liberty High paving. In addition, summer is when we take care of many smaller maintenance projects that are part of the construction report. This summer, these included gym floors at two schools, the track replacement at Century High, bleachers at Liberty High, repairs of the tennis courts at FSK, and renovation of the fax room and a new auditorium sound system at Westminster High. I also want to note that the opening of the new East Middle was very successful, and Mr. Carver and the staff did an amazing job. We all were able to tour the new facility along with other elected officials just before the school year began. We still have a little ways to go to finish the entire site, and we're working through the interim processes. But I'm sure you'll all agree that the work on the new school is exceptional, and elements that incorporate the original school are really the icing on the cake. This winter, we will have an open house once the site work is finalized. Any questions?
It was stunning. It's just so incredibly thought, well thought out when you walk throughout the whole building. And a lot of the materials are so updated, you know, like multifunctional, even just thinking about the cafeteria, you know, with the tables and how they can be set up in so many different ways. And it just, everything just so incredibly well thought out and just very excited, this opportunity that we were able to give our kids. So, well done to the entire team, just.
Absolutely. Yeah, it was a team effort. Thanks to everybody, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That was an easy one.
That was, thank you.
And now we will have a report on Curriculum Guide Proposed Revision for 2023-2024.
This is where we report on curricular changes that will be undertaken during the 23-24 school year for future adoption. Mr. Wernick is here for any questions or discussion.
Ms. Savigny.
Thanks, Mr. Wernick. I just have a couple of quick questions, and most of them were on art. As just kind of the way it's talking about expanding scope and sequence and then additional resources and samples for teachers and streamlined access for teachers. I was just curious what that was referring to.
So as we look at our standards and as we look at the new curriculum, we just want to ensure that we have the best support out there for our teachers. So really, you know, providing additional appropriate materials, providing additional, you know, supports within the lesson plan. So it's expanding our scope and sequence, really having, as we have, last year, we hired a new supervisor of fine arts as well as an assistant supervisor. So they really look at where are the curricular needs and then making sure that our teachers have what's necessary to teach the curriculum.
One example of that is the work that we've been doing for the inclusion of our students with significant cognitive disabilities into, in the classrooms, is to provide some modifications on the accessibility of our content for some of our students with special needs as well, too. So that's a point of it as well, too, is to some of the modifications to help that inclusivity of our students with disabilities.
Okay, so that's what the comments about the streamlined access for teachers is referring to?
Correct, correct. And we're trying to create, put those, because those strategies for access and inclusion are beneficial to all kids, but we really wanted to make sure that they are in a place that's accessible for our teachers as they're doing work. So that'll be a trend, I think, that we've already started and you'll probably see in other areas over time when it comes to supporting our students with disabilities.
And just one other question. You know, in a bunch of places, we talk about, you know, the state framework for social studies and the state framework for science and state framework for various components of the program. Where is the easiest place to go see that?
So if you look at our scope and sequence within the Carroll County Public Schools website, that has all the indicators that the framework has. So really, our scope and sequence models the framework with the indicators, similar to when you look at our family life, it has many other, it's very similar. So we take what the framework that the state provides us, and then we put it into a more, you know, more, a document that's more easily able to be read.
Okay, gotcha. And you're saying it's on the website. Where specifically would we go to?
So you can go to, when you go into Carroll County Public Schools, if you go into the instruction, curriculum and instruction, right down at the bottom, you can see scope and sequences.
Okay, gotcha.
In the little, it's a little bubble.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, I need a motion for the approval of a award of bids.
So moved.
By Ms. Savigny, seconded by Mr. Whistler.
I'll second it.
We'll catch you again.
Okay, there are five items on the monthly purchasing report. The first one is sealant replacement at Century High School and Winters Mill High School. This award is to seal the exterior of the building for Century High and Winters Mill. Second, we have a sole source procurement for the Carroll County Youth Services Bureau. This item reflects an update in our process to recognize that we operate under multiple contracts with the Carroll County Youth Services Bureau. These are existing agreements, but we want to make this adjustment to compile them collectively under one sole source award to align with updated best practice. In the future, we will continue to bring these awards to you in this manner. Third, we have the contract amendment for Bus Patrol America LLC. This is an amendment to the existing contract with Bus Patrol. As a reminder, we entered the original agreement with Bus Patrol in the first year of the pandemic, which meant that buses did not run and established an immediate deficit right away. There's no actual cost to CCPS under the contract, but Bus Patrol deducts the cost of the security equipment installed on the school bus fleet from any fines or violations. If the cost of the technology were to be satisfied under a separate MOU between the board and the Carroll County Sheriff's Office, any excess money collected from fines would then go to the sheriff to offset his incurred costs from administering the violation and court process. This addendum recognizes the impact that the pandemic caused and resets the contract while also establishing a more favorable fee for the technology cost. It has been developed in collaboration with Sheriff DeWis and his command, and he is very much in support. I would like to recognize that Lieutenant Phil Lawrence, who is here this evening, is here offering the sheriff's endorsement. Fourth, we have wall wrapping services, an annual contract which both facilities and food services access as needed throughout the year for wraps. And finally, we have a sole source procurement for sources of strength. This award is a part of the sources of strength program in our secondary schools, and in particular, this award covers the certification costs for our staff members who have been through the Train the Trainer program with sources of strength. Questions?
Ms. Savigny.
Oh, you can go ahead.
I know Sheriff DeWis is all for the Bus Patrol, but I do have a few comments that, trust me, you know, I'm the cheerleader for the bus contractors. Now, I just want them to hear it, so you just got to see what I got to say here. But I'm telling you, we do have problems. I just was contacted by a bus contractor, and I know Carol, her mother owned the bus service when I was at South Carroll, but she's just bought two brand-new buses, and they caused damage to their brand-new, two brand-new buses, haven't made a payment, and she asked when and about who was going to pay for replacing these dashes at $701.71 each. And we were told by CCP Transportation, it's out of their hands. Well, somebody needs to take care of that. That's not right. Number two, equipment that malfunctioned always takes months to get replaced. I do believe they use this mount that's too close to their radios, and you can't use the bus radios. And I think this is a very concerning one, that I think one bus contractor alone this fall had to replace 15 batteries on her fleet because it wears their, wears the batteries down. So anyway, I just, these things definitely need to be addressed. I don't know when or how. And also, one of the bus contractors said they show up at, you know, unannounced. So I don't know where, Mr. O'Neil, we go with this, but we, I don't want our bus contractors being upset about this. We need our bus contractors. But I will tell you, if somebody screwed up my dashboard on a brand-new pickup truck, I would be going crazy. And, you know, we've got to fix this stuff, and it can't be, oh, I don't know. So who do we, how do we work this out? Because that part's not pretty. But I know Sheriff DeWis wants his money. I know it works because they run my granddaughter's bus stop all the time, and I want her safe. But we've got to, we've got to take care of our bus contractors.
So those are operational issues, and if, you know, if Carol or anyone else feels like they're not being resolved, they can certainly bring them to me. And then if they still feel like they're not being resolved, they can certainly bring them.
Oh, they'll be back to me and Mr. Whistler.
I would just say, Mrs. Herbert, you know, that's all anecdotal, and I'm not dismissing it out of hand.
Right.
But I'm aware that there have been some operational issues.
Right.
I'm also aware that they've been addressed. It's a fleet of 300 and some buses.
Right, I do understand that.
I feel like they get there in a satisfactory time. I'm not aware of us never remedying a situation in time. For what it's worth, since we're on this subject now, all of the equipment is now, all of the security equipment, as well as the bus itself, is inspected during each bus inspection period throughout the year, which gives us time throughout the year to take a peek at it and make it work. I'm not going to pretend that we've never encountered a system, for instance, the camera system, where there's not an instance where it's not working, but in general, it is working and is remedied. And, you know, those videos are pretty helpful for a lot of things.
Absolutely. I am concerned about those, and I've heard this from more than one contractor, about the batteries. And that is very discouraging, you know, over the winter holidays, you stop driving them for five days, and then there you are, you've got to jump all your school buses, you know, the night before or that weekend before or whenever, you know. So I don't, I don't know what, I don't know why that's happening, but it sounds like some kind of electrical mess up to me.
I'll reach out to, I'll start with Ms. Johnson. I'll reach out and, you know, do my best to.
Absolutely. And, you know, they call me and.
All I can tell you is they've never called me.
Well, it's, you know, and that's fine. But, you know, I know all these county people, you know, I grew up with them, so. Dr. Dorsey, do you have something to say?
After John's comment, I said they will call him tomorrow.
Oh, I love that. That's good. Okay, John, all right, girls and boys, you need to call John first thing tomorrow morning. He will be there. Okay, I'm just stating facts and, you know, and buses aren't cheap any, well, they weren't cheap to begin with, but they're very expensive now, so.
Yeah, the one thing that caught my attention was the placement of the antenna transmitters. Working with antenna systems before, if they're placed too close to another transmitter system, they can interfere with one another. So that was a major issue they raised with me as far as can they make sure, you know, is there some sort of spec they can refer to as far as the installation to make sure that the equipment they install doesn't interfere with other equipment on the bus, particularly the communications equipment. But yeah, just relaying the concerns, and thanks for taking the arrows.
Yes, and I am thankful for the bus drivers. We all are. Any other comments?
I did have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So, and John, this might be for you, or maybe Dr. McCabe. But the two items that are sole source procurements, I know there are, you know, specific rules around that, and we don't have any concerns with these being sole source procurements because they're both longstanding relationships.
Correct. We don't have any concerns with them being sole sourced. In the case of the Youth Services Bureau awards, we, so we, I would believe a school system is the most audited public entity in any county in Maryland. And so we go through a routine set of audits annually, periodically, and some of the feedback we've been receiving is that best practices would be that we look at documentation a little bit differently, which is always good to do. And also, in a situation with Youth Services where we have a series of, a series of contracts with one entity to, you know, to collect different services, it probably would be advisable to just sort of bring them that way and make that known. So we're just making that adjustment to sort of honor best practices. And as Dr. McCabe said, we'll, for future years, bring it to you that way always. So you'll know, basically, it's a way of letting you or the public or anyone know. We have, is it five, I think, different contracts with Youth Services Bureau? And here they all are at one time, and everyone's aware, and we're awarding them through sole source. And with sources of strength, that's a well-established proprietary program in many of our, I think all of our secondary schools now. And this is just the next element of that. You've already approved what leads up to this, the Train to Trainer motto. I think this is for the certification of those trainers.
Right, thank you for that. I mean, I didn't have any concerns. I just wanted to kind of make the point, just to make sure that we're comfortable with it. I know we have a fantastic and longstanding partnership with the Youth Services Bureau, and they are wonderful to work with, so certainly no concerns with that at all. But it looks like, looks like five locally funded contracts and three grant-funded with the YSB. And it's about two, a little over 200,000 total, I think, in the.
Yes.
Okay. Is that consistent with what we've had in prior years?
Carl.
Or are we, I was just curious if we are ramping up those services or, because we're getting additional grant funding and.
Most of those are mental health-related, that's why they pointed at me. So the grants vary. So the, I would say the swing in that, as far as how many, is based on grant availability. We try to seek out grants to increase mental health services. One of the biggest advantages of YSB, as we, I believe articulated in that, we'll have one student referred to one, like, source, and then is best served through a different contract, so that we're freeing up resources to meet other students' needs. So that interconnectedness of one grant to the other, or one contract to another, students do move from one to the other at times. Mr. Gode, the coordinator of Mental Health and Student Services, is instrumental in communicating with YSB, knowing what slots are available as needs arise from our schools. So the value, the up, you know, it goes up and down, can go down. You know, some of this money is grant money that we're able to, when we're made aware of grants and we're awarded grants, we try to squeeze everything we can out of any grant opportunity for our kids.
Okay, makes perfect sense. I did have one other question about, thank you, Mr. Shriker, on number four, which was the wall wrapping services.
Yes.
I know that we've approved these in the past. I was a little concerned with this one just because it doesn't actually have a dollar amount associated with it. It basically says just kind of subject to availability.
Yeah, it's sort of like a pick list for wall wrapping. So it puts the vehicle in place so that if Ms. Sarno has things she wants to wrap in a cafeteria, or if Mr. Prokop had to replace a vehicle in the fleet and we needed to rewrap that, you've approved the purchasing vehicle so that they could access it, but there's not, it's like a commodity list specific to wall wrapping, if that makes any sense?
Okay.
Like when you approve what sometimes I might call a pick list for printer parts.
Musical instruments or furniture items, right.
This is that specifically for the wraps.
Okay, okay. I thought I had recalled when we looked at these in the past that they did have like a dollar figure associated with it.
We did. So the first year that we embarked on wrapping the facility's fleet, we did set a dollar amount because we knew exactly how many vehicles we were aiming to try to accomplish with that bid. At this point, I think Ray has them wrapped, and it would just be, what mostly, this would only be if we were going to wrap another one or another two, or if, you know, if we, something happened to one and we were going to rewrap it.
Okay.
And so that would be in the maintenance budget. Now Karen or Ms. Sarno, you know, she might modify a cafeteria, I don't know if there's a menu change or, you know, something like that. So she would be accessing that out of the food service program fund as she updates wraps in cafeterias.
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
It does, it does. I was just a little concerned because it was almost like there was, it was open-ended on how much could be spent on this. Was just feeling that, like, maybe we should put a cap on it.
And it gets back to the best practice conversation. So many years ago, all of the Maryland systems learned from, I'm talking like three cycles ago, six years each. You know, if we ever could anticipate that a contract might exceed $25,000 in a year, then best practice is that we should bring that contract to you proactively. It may not exceed that, but if we reasonably think it might, then we should bring it. So we bring. we bring this just, just for that reason, just like we do with all those other buying guides or pick lists.
Okay.
All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. And now, I need a motion for the approval of appointments. Dr. Dorsey, and seconded by Ms. Savigny.
Okay. I have two recommendations for appointment this evening. These are two acting appointments in situations where an employee is on leave. First, Natasha Costley from Special Education Teacher Learning for Independence at Westminster High to Acting Assistant Principal Westminster High. And secondly, Timothy Skilling, School Counselor at Linton Springs Elementary to Acting Assistant Principal, Linton Springs Elementary.
Comments? Questions? And for all, call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. I need an approval of the Carroll County Public Schools' negotiators.
Are we doing the personnel actions?
Oh, shoot. Yes. Approval of personnel action items. And seconded by Mr. Whistler.
Okay. For the monthly personnel actions, there are 31 new hires, nine rehired retirees, one released from contract, five broken contracts, three promotions, two leaves of absence, and three increases in FTE.
Comments? Questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, now I need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Public Schools' negotiators.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Savigny, seconded by Mr. Whistler.
Annually, we bring you a list of employees who may be selected to serve on one of the board's negotiations teams, who assist the chief negotiator or bargaining teams during the negotiations process.
Comments? Questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, I would like to have a motion for the approval of the 2024 legislative positions.
So moved.
By Ms. Savigny, seconded by, by Mr. Whistler.
At the August 23 meeting with the Commissioners and Carroll delegation, we presented a draft of legislative positions for the 2024 General Assembly. Broad position statements provide general guidance to allow me and the staff to react to individual bills that arise during session, as well as offer support for Mrs. Herbert and Mr. Whistler as they participate as your representatives on the MAAB Legislative Committee. I also wanted to share that we have continued the discussion from the delegation meeting with our delegation to address the challenges with blueprint implementation as we move forward to the legislative session. I'm also aware the Commissioners continue their own work to address the issue, both here locally and as a part of Mako.
Ms. Savigny.
Thank you. I certainly support all of this information. And I know that we had provided a copy of this to the Commissioners and the delegates and the packets for that meeting.
Correct.
Just wanted to follow up on, I know that at the end of that meeting, we had discussed a handful of additional items that we were going to try to get to them by October 1st, I guess, so that the delegates could be more effective in Annapolis, like kind of leading up to session. And so, I just wanted to get a sense for how that was going.
Right. Yes, thank you. That's true. We've had ongoing conversations with members of the delegation, especially Senator Reedy. And those conversations have led to also a broader realization that I think some of the larger blueprint issues, there does seem to be some, some momentum statewide that, that there would be legislative tweaks this year. And generally, those tweaks would align with, with what we discussed or what these positions represent, sort of unawareness of the pre-K challenges being one of, one of those, those main ones. And so, the Senator's well aware of those and is sharing those with the delegation as a whole. So, we know that some things we talked about, perhaps bringing forward ourselves, are, are now part of a broader statewide conversation, which we could align with. And as Dr. McCabe's already mentioned, some ongoing work remains underway on some of those other points. And we, we feel like there's some positive energy there statewide as well, that, that, that all of the elected leadership and state officials who have a role in blueprint, excuse me, blueprint implementation are sort of coming to this realization that, you know, we do need to look at, at phasing it in, or implementing it in a way that, you know, that's going to be effective, that makes sense in supporting boards of that as, as they do that work. So, we feel like there's some really good conversations that, you know, that do address that follow-up that was discussed.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Sure.
And I would like to thank the delegation, Commissioner Kyler, Commissioner Rothstein, voicing, we, you know, voicing our, our position compared to other counties at Mako, and for everyone listening and helping us to, to help implement this blueprint and to make it a positive event for the next nine years. And so, I want to thank all of them for working really hard for Carroll County Public Schools. All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Now, I need approval of the Baltimore Board of Officials for Women's Sports Volleyball Contract.
So moved.
So moved.
And seconded by Dr. Dorsey.
Good evening.
This is a contract to provide volleyball officials for all varsity and junior varsity home games. Questions?
So, what does a volleyball official get a game?
I'd have to look off the top of my head. I want to say it's in the neighborhood of $80 to $85.
Wow.
Uh-huh.
In a year and a couple of months, you and I can be a volleyball official then.
Choir's no running.
That's exactly right.
Head officials on a stand.
Yes.
The assistant officials right on the side.
Right, right. So, yeah.
By all means. We are always recruiting for officials. So, if you'd like, I would get you information.
And it's inside. Inside, you don't have to worry about the weather, usually, unless it's electric. So, okay.
I actually did play volleyball in high school. So, you know.
You can, you can co-mingle that money with all the royalties you're going to get with Mr. Mark's video with you singing in the background.
I will certainly pass on information for both of you.
That was good. Yeah. My, yes, ma'am.
Congratulations to Liberty High School for winning states last year in their volleyball game.
There you go. There you go. So, we do need good officials.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other comments? Well, I guess we're going to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Good seeing you. You only come once in a blue moon. And at this time, I need a motion for the approval of membership for the Family Life Advisory Committee for the 2023-2024 year.
So moved.
So moved by Ms., and seconded by, oh, again?
Oh, it's, they're, they're out of order on the agenda, but...
Look, I'm just going down the page.
Right.
Okay. I'm going to stick with what I'm doing. Is that okay? All right. I was going to say, whoa, I know, I thought I read that right. All right. So, we, motion?
Wait, which did we make the motion for?
We are going to, I, I announced, I just went down the list. Approval of membership for the Family Life Advisory Committee for the 2023-2024 year. I just went...
And I moved.
You moved, and you seconded it.
Okay.
All right.
I'm seeking approval of the members of the Family Life Advisory Committee for the 23-24 school year.
Comments? Questions?
I just want to say thanks again to all these folks stepping up. We got so many applications online, a great cross-section of our neighbors across the county to select from. Thanks to everyone who applied. Sorry if we didn't select you this year. But meetings are always open to the public, if I'm not mistaken, right? And can always come and listen. And, but again, thanks to everyone for getting involved. This is, this is a very important committee.
All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, next on the agenda, I need a motion for the approval of revisions to board policy KHBA school-related fundraising.
So moved.
Mr. Whistler.
At last month's meeting, we brought for discussion some updates to board policy KHBA school-related fundraising. Those revisions return this evening for board action. There was some discussion at the August meeting with legal counsel, Mr. O'Malley, about clarifying specific language related to the Equal Access Act. Those revisions have been incorporated in the version for act, for action this evening.
Those revisions are in red. So, the original markup's in bold and...
Ms. Savigny.
I did just have a quick question, and it was, I believe it's actually in the regulations, not the policy, but just on page three of the regulations, on the guidelines at the bottom, how it's talking about in general fundraising activities that will result in a modification to a CCPS facility or grounds are not permitted. Because playgrounds would fall underneath that. But I guess we're basically saying that there, there's additional, like, it would be allowed if we have additional requirements?
I would, conceivably, I think this would be more for if you wanted to construct something new on our property, or build some sort of a memorial on our property, or, you know, different things around playing fields, because sometimes there's those relationships with rec councils or other, other entities where they might want to have an observation deck to look at multiple softball or baseball fields, something like that. You, you can't modify your buildings or your, or build something new on your property without, without your permission. But this also might be a case where, in a specific scenario, the board would want the superintendent to enter into some sort of a relationship with an entity to do something positive on grounds. So, in general, it's not, it's not approved just loosely in general, but we could also work out agreements in those instances where special projects could take place.
Okay.
And believe it or not, we've had that historically, where things do get constructed on your property, on our property, without our prior approval or knowledge. And then there could be consequences for you or for the organization for that, stormwater consequences or other kinds of consequences.
Okay.
Yeah. I bought a building one time and didn't tell Jim Marks for athletics.
See?
But guess what? I got the building where I wanted it, and we paid for it. So, I was bad. But we needed it.
Yeah. We tried to leave enough flexibility in certain places where, even, another example's crowdfunding. So, I think that there were, the last time I checked before the board docs were uploaded, I think there were only a couple of comments from the public, and one was sort of, you should keep it pretty restrictive, and especially the dollar amounts. And you know, from a lot of discussion in recent months, that a playground alone is usually, you just mentioned playgrounds, is more than $100,000. So, you know, those are sort of archaic. At least one of the comments was, you should allow crowdfunding. And so, where, where we are with that is, we don't want to generally just allow crowdfunding at, you know, a classroom level or a department level. But, you know, you always have the ability, in, in terms of a, of a specific project, to, to craft a memorandum of understanding or something like that with an organization where those kind of parameters can be set. So, we're trying to, you know, we want to have that balance between ordinary standard guidelines or controls, but also the, in certain places, flexibility to, to explore different things when they come up.
Thank you. All right. I call for the vote.
I call for the vote.
Oh, Dr. Dorsey. I'm sorry.
Dr. Dorsey, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm looking at the, at the regs on the first page at the very bottom, where we talk about the approved fundraising project. And whether we, as raffles, we still need permits for raffles, right? And I wondered if, if we do, whether we could, you know, just sort of have in parentheses or somewhere indicate that we need to make sure we have a permit for holding those, if that's still the case.
Honestly, Dr. Dorsey, I don't know the answer to that here. And that language obviously is existing, and so I didn't change it. I'll have to inquire. And if that is, is the case, we certainly have no objection to adding that in parentheses in that area before it's published.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Dr. Dorsey, while you're saying that, because you mentioned raffles, I know that the county, Carroll County, has a regulation that they require a permit for any raffles, especially if they're online raffles, web-based raffles.
The PCA and PCOs, the academic experts, getting those, well, getting a permit.
And so, Mr. Shockney, Mr. Shockney's telling me that the school directors are confirming what you're saying. And so, and I guess I look at legal counsel. Would you need to make an amendment to that? Or is it understood that we'll make that non-substantive correction? Ms. Eisenberg's suggesting that if you want to approve it with that, that you would make that amendment to include a, for, well, that's in the regs. I guess that's not in the board policy.
Yeah. We don't, no, then we don't do that.
So, with your general agreement, we'll make that change in the regulation to note that raffles should require a permit.
All right. Anything else?
Have a reminder, yes, on the next page, page two of the regs, I was looking at number five, where we're talking about displays with endorsed political candidates. Now, are these displays that the political candidates have put up, or are we referring to something else?
That would refer to election day activities or primary activities.
So, would be displays from the political candidates or from their campaigns?
Yes, on, on election day.
Election day, Dr. Dorsey.
Right. I understand that. But again, I'm just looking at it says, will be terminated, removed at the conclusion of the election.
Right.
And I know that's a requirement that the candidates have. So, I was just questioning whether there were other displays you were referencing.
No, it's that. And so, you know, and, and, Dr. Dorsey, I'm not aware, I'm getting a lot of feedback here. I'm sorry if you're, I don't know if you're hearing me or not. I'm unaware, in all the years I've been here, of a candidate ever leaving a sign there. But if they did, we would, you know, we would remove it after the election was over.
So, the ones that were left behind?
Right. Correct. Yeah.
And there's no reference to any other election activity in terms of advertising or things like that in, in...
All right. Could I ask one other question?
Okay.
Dr. McCabe, there was an individual during public participation tonight who was talking about some of the, some concerns with advertising and fundraising and activities of the, the kids in the classroom. Did, did we have any concerns with that? I mean, I think it's addressed through the, the regulations of, of what we think is appropriate and what is not appropriate.
There, there's a separate board policy and administrative regulations for advertising in schools. And this is more specific to school-related fundraising. And that, although this refers to that or incorporates it by reference, that's where, that's where more of those controls are set. And where really, in that, in that case, Ms. Gaddis sort of makes sure we are honoring the Equal Access Act from what, you know, what we do or don't permit, or what we send to the community table versus distributing directly in schools. And we didn't, we looked at that at the same time as this and didn't really see a great need to, to bring revisions there. We didn't see a need to change practice, and therefore we didn't see a need to bring revisions to that policy. That's, that's accurate, correct? Yeah. So, we feel like it's functioning appropriately.
Yeah. But it does go to that advertising piece because, again, when a school sort of promotes things like that, again, it feel like, okay, my school is supporting this or saying this is where I should go get my, my meal. So, yeah, school is endorsing pizza latte. Like in the earlier days, we used to give out the little Pizza Hut awards, and everybody felt like, okay, the school is endorsing Pizza Hut. You know?
Yeah. That's something that we can take a look at is the anecdote that he told this evening about, about the particular restaurant and, and what a school was doing with that. Because, as Mr. O'Neal just mentioned, you know, we need to look at the equal access clause. And if, if we're allowing that to happen for one restaurant, we, we have to open it up for all. So, we'll look into that.
Okay.
All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, we'll move on to discussion. 7A. Now we'll move on to discussion, 7A, Proposed Curriculum Guide Implementation for 2023-2024.
We bring for your discussion all curricular revisions that we developed during the prior school year. These will return for board approval next month, and then be implemented during the 23-24 school year. Mr. Wernick is here to provide any highlights and answer any questions.
These were brought last year at this time as a report, similar to what we just had earlier.
Ms. Sevigny.
Mr. Wernick, thank you. I just had one question about Health III. We were talking about the CPR component of Health III. I know that Ms. Pataglia's not here tonight, but she was, she was very concerned about that, and we had had a conversation on a couple of different occasions of whether it would be possible to get the CPR...
Yes, we did have it.
...back into Health II.
Yes, we were able to last year have a part of Health II, and we still have it as Health III as well, just based on the funding, you know, that we receive each year. So last year we had it as part of Health II, but this year it's, it is part of Health III.
Okay, so we're not able to get it into Health II kind of moving forward?
Not at this time. They are trained and they do receive everything except the hands-on, so they have the entire training. So Health III actually gives them the hands-on, it gives them just a little bit more, it's like a step up. So Health I, Health II, and Health III actually receive the, the training, the Health III receives then the actual hands-on component, that's the only difference. You know, they receive pretty much the same visual training, they receive the same instruction except for hands-on.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, yes ma'am?
Um, just to, just to answer this question, is Health I and Health II a graduation requirement moving forward?
Yes, Health I and Health II are, Health III is, is an elective.
Not for you, but...
You're too old for this.
I think the, is it the sophomores this year, or the first ones that are required to take Health II?
It was the sophomores last, last year.
Sophomores last year, okay, so the junior class this year, okay.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Now we will move on to the proposed high school programs of study for 2024-2025.
For your discussion, our proposed changes to the high school program of studies for the 24-25 school year. Mr. Wernick remains to share any highlights and answer any questions.
As we look at the programs of studies, looking at the blueprint, we modified some other information on college and career readiness and meeting graduation requirements based on blueprint, as well as we have some additional information on enrollment courses that may be offered. We have a new CTE program of hospitality and tourism that we had talked about last year that's now in place, so we added that to our program of study. And then you can just see various programs where we've either modified some of the descriptions or added, you know, possibly a prerequisite.
Just a quick question about the AP pre-calculus as being a course that was added. Pre-calculus was already there, right, but was it not an AP level?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe that, as I look, I'm just going to double check as I flip to, to the current page, it was not, I believe, an AP...
An AP level, or, okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. Now we will discuss the proposed 2024-2025 school calendar. Dr. McCabe.
Each year in September, I bring a proposed school calendar for the subsequent year for discussion. Following the discussion, the proposed calendar is submitted for two months of public comment before returning for action at the November meeting. For school year 24-25, I'm proposing a calendar that begins after Labor Day, includes three emergency closing days, has a winter break from December 23rd through January 1st, has spring break from Thursday, April 17th through Tuesday, April 22nd, and ends for students on June 13th. Comments and questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so one thing I noticed was that students are returning from winter break on a Thursday. I was just wondering if that's something that I've noticed, when it usually ends at the end of a week, students are less likely to attend school, students are more likely to say, oh, it's two days of the week. Do we have any concerns with that, or is it just because we need to keep within the numbers that we're doing that?
Yeah, we have to keep, you know, within a certain number of days. We do think about those things when we, when we propose a calendar, and, and we try to, we try to design a calendar that encourages attendance, but it's not always possible to have, to have all of the weeks be exactly the way we would like to have them in order to get to our 180 days.
It looks like it's one of those, one of those years where when Christmas, or, you know, the 25th falls right in the middle of the week, and it kind of messes up how you want to...
It does.
...do the days on either end of it. It's like, do you give the days in the front, or you give the days in the back?
Right. Dr. Dorsey.
Okay, I will just continue to put in a plug for a couple of revisions. Certainly shared with our legislative group that we're supporting local control of the calendar, and in the past, over these last several years, we used to start school the last week in August, and I know that there has been a percentage of the community that has certainly asked for that over the years, as well as some of the staff members who feel like they want to get started, so that they can have their kids receiving as many weeks as some of the other students with some of the testing that's done. So again, I would ask that people at least consider it, and I guess, one thing is that again, Labor Day, I guess with it being early, on the second of the 24-25 school year, it doesn't put us as far into September as it did this year, but again, there was a time when we had gotten used to beginning that last week in August, and I also always like to put in a plug for Jewish holidays in show respect for our staff members and students who, you know, have their Jewish holidays. And I have to say, I do look at even those days of fall in 24 or 25 school year, but I think it's something certainly you can consider out of respect.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Dr. McCabe. Now we will move on to the proposed FY25 capital budget, FY26 through FY30 capital improvement plan request.
At the September meeting each year, we bring the proposed CIP. It then returns for action at the October meeting, which allows it to be submitted to the state for the IAC's annual process and the General Assembly, and to the county to be included in their budget deliberations. We held the work session on the educational facilities master plan back in May, and had a very deep discussion on the elements that now lead to the proposed CIP. Mr. Kane will address some of those highlights in the proposed CIP, and then respond to any questions or discussion.
Ms. Sevigny. I didn't even have to look.
Mr. Kane, did you want to say a few things before I start launching into questions?
I was just going to hit the highlights from the cover sheet, you know, just, the projects are included in the capital requests are from the, they come from the educational facilities master plan that the board approved in June, so it shouldn't be a surprise. The, the capital budget and the CIP requests finally put some dollar amounts to those projects that are in the facility master plan. The FY25 capital budget request, that's before you, does include construction funds for the four kindergarten slash pre-kindergarten slash pride program additions at Cranberry Station Elementary, Friendship Valley Elementary, Sandy Mount, and Tawny Town Elementary Schools. A little bit of a change in budgets this year from the 24 budget for these projects, mainly because when we put the budgets together for 24, that was prior to having a planning committee, prior to developing the educational specifications, prior to having an architect actually look at how they would add on to the building. So the, the costs have gone up a little bit from the original estimate, but that's pretty typical when you get into the specifics and trying to figure out how the addition would be added. Couple of the other projects that are included in the 25 request, we do, we did add design funding that will, we'll be asking the county for funding for Freedom Elementary's addition and Sykesville Middle's addition. Again, those were just added this year in the facilities master plan. And then there are funding, there is design funding for the first phase of the pre-kindergarten additions to implement blueprint. We're still in the process of developing the scope study with mostly architects, but to be forward-thinking, we need to ask for design funding next fiscal year to start designing those additions if, if, you know, since they take a year, two, 18 months to two years to design, and then a year to 18 months to construct, the sooner we get it moving, the better, so we're just being forward-thinking on, on that. And then the other project I'd highlight is that we are asking for $300,000 to, from the county in FY25 to hire an architect to do a feasibility study to start looking at how Liberty High School would be modernized. And if you think back to, you know, the East Middle that just opened, everyone, you know, toured it, looked how beautiful it was, that, that project started with a feasibility study, trying to figure out how we'd modernize East Middle, so this is kind of the first step in that process, which, you know, takes several years to get to the end, where you have a nice new facility for, for students. The last thing I'd highlight is just, and, and I know, I've highlighted this in past years, that the state cost share, there's a state-local cost share, our current state share of construction cost has been at 59%. We've been in danger of going lower for the past several years, but we've been held harmless by, first the governor, then the inter-agency commission on school construction held us harmless. This year's calculation, which begins to take effect in fiscal year '25 and '26, the new numbers came out, and, and it has us going to a lower percentage, but because they did include that, the waivers were really until blueprint got off the ground and, and the formulas were developed, so at this point, we would anticipate, yes, the, the IAC has approved it, it should be going into COMAR language here shortly, so we'll be going down in FY25 to 57% of construction cost, and then in '26, it will go down to 54%. So it's a two-year phase in. The calculation said we should be at 53% actually, but they won't go lower than 5%, and they will, they phase it in over two years. The good news is they will recalculate in two, two summers for fiscal years '27 and '28, and with enrollments going up, it's possible that it could, our percentage could, could go back up in the calculation, so there's hope, hopefully in the future, it'll, it'll get back to where it was, so. That, those are the things I just wanted to highlight, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
It's all yours.
Did you want to, did you want to go first?
Oh, sure. So I just have like one sort of encompassing question. So some of these schools have specific replacements that you want to implement, so like an HVAC system roof replacement, whereas some more use like a general term of modernization. That's like Liberty High School and William Winchester Elementary. So what exactly is the criteria for a modernized school building? Do you have like a set of listed standards a building should have to be what is considered modernized?
So, yeah, a modernization would view the whole building comprehensively, it would bring the entire building up to current building standards, current educational standards, so in the case of Liberty, it is the smallest of the high schools square footage-wise, but it handles almost as many students as all of the other, except for Westminster, but it's, it's around 1,100 to 1,200 students, but it is 40,000 to 50,000 square feet smaller. The modernization would address that and add square footage to bring it up to current educational standards. So modernization really looks at a whole, at the whole building and tries to bring it all up to standard, whereas the HVAC and roof replacements, we're really just looking at that one system to try and replace it, to get it to the point where we can modernize it. So we look at roof replacements and HVAC replacements, because those things are critical to having a building open and, and running, so we, we want to keep those replaced and, keep the school in operation until we do get to that modernization. Typically, 40 to 50 years is what we would shoot for doing a modernization or a full upgrade of a school. Unfortunately, that's not always achievable because of our funding, you know, the funding that we receive from the county and the state, but, but that's kind of the difference. There is a pretty good description in the educational facilities master plan document that kind of goes into a little bit more detail, but hopefully that answers it.
Yes, thank you. I ask that because when you look at the word modernization, it's like, I want that as a student, I'm sure many other students want that, so thank you for answering.
All right, Ms. Sevigny.
So, Mr. Kane, I want to thank you for pointing out that the FCI index would be increasing, I guess because some of the additional capacity projects, some of the larger projects that would need to be done on a regular basis are kind of getting pushed out, so I guess this is one of the unintended consequences of focusing on capacity projects first, rather than like a Liberty modernization earlier in the schedule.
Correct, it's, it's always a balance of, we've been a little bit blessed, I know, you know, when we, when we were flat or when we lost enrollment, we could focus capital-wise on our aging infrastructure, because for decades, we were building new schools and building capacity, and we, we couldn't keep up with the aging school infrastructure that we had. We couldn't keep up with the modernization schedule that we wanted, so we were able to start doing those things, but now with, with enrollments growing again, you know, and blueprint expansion of pre-K, you know, we, we do have to always provide the seats for the students, so that the downside is, there's only so much money to go around, so we can't do as many modernizations in the plan that, as we would like to. We were pretty fortunate, the last six-year cycle, we were able to do two, two large projects and upgrade Career and Tech, the Career and Tech Center and East Middle, which really helped to keep our FCI in line, but to keep it there, we don't, pretty much need to do two, two or three modernizations every, every six years, which is, doing a high school as one of those is a, is a big number too, so.
Right. Well, when, and when you look at the Liberty High modernization, I kind of choked on the, the price tag on that one. $146 million is a, is a huge price tag.
Yeah.
Is that, I guess that's based on prevailing costs for square footage right now, and...
It's taking the current cost per square foot and, and escalating it, assuming there'll be, you know, four to five, I think it's four and a half percent escalation every year, which is pretty typical over the last, you know, five, five or six years at least, so we would assume that those costs would go up about four to five percent, and with the square footage that we would need to do for Liberty High, you know, around 200, I think it's around 200, 210,000 square feet, that's, that's the number you get, and, and that's pretty typical, I think, if you looked at what other counties are doing with their high schools, it's, it's pretty much in line with what other folks are seeing.
Okay, that, that's what I was going to ask, is, you know, we, we had the issues with Van Valley years ago, with the, you know, 70 million that we weren't able to get state support on that particular project, for the 146 million, that's, you know, so we're more than doubling, which is, I guess, probably about right from, on a 15-year schedule, right, more than, more than doubling. But do we expect that at that level, that we would still get full state participation in that kind of a project?
So we do anticipate state participation. Full is a complicated calculation, because it's based on justified enrollment, and then so many square feet per student, and then, you know, how big... so many square feet per student and then, you know, how big we're building versus what that state formula tells you. But we anticipate state funding and, and I would anticipate maybe not full, you know, they're not going to participate in all of the square footage, but I would anticipate they're going to participate in a, in a large amount of the square footage because of the adjacent schools and where the projections are going with the high schools. So those are to be determined, I guess, in the future as we see enrollments in the future ha- actually happen and discussions with the state happen. But at this point, I would anticipate, and in the document, I think it's not quite a 50-50 split, but closer to 50% of the overall project than, than not, so.
Okay. So there's nothing specific to Liberty that is driving that cost up? That's just kind of the, the price of poker now for building or modernizing a high school?
Yeah, but, and it's just based on the square footage times the cost per square foot. And then there's percentages for design and percentages for furniture and equipment that are based on the construction cost, which pretty much an industry standard, you know, 10% is what we use for design. Now, will the actual cost be actually at 10%? Probably not, but from a budgeting standpoint now, some years out, it's a, it's a good guideline, so.
Just as a reminder, scared, scared Bill. I like that. Sidled, sidled up to Bill Kane. Just as a reminder, if we go back to maybe the East project, because I know it took me several years to, to explain this, I thought successfully, and that's on me. At this stage, this is a state worksheet calculation and, and we want to follow their, their guidelines because we want to maximize the amount of money that the state will participate in. As you all know, the, the actual cost of the project will be driven by the bid market at, at the time that, that it goes out the bid. And to the question of FCI, the slide that Bob's projecting, this, this slide is theoretical, meaning if, if the proposed plan were enacted and you can guess which year without trying, Liberty would open. And so there's not, there's not only a direct correlation between how much money's available or provided for the capital program, the FCI really moves forward when you do a modernization, a full school replacement as opposed to systems help. But, but that's always the determining factor as we talk about this as part of our strategic plan.
Right. Yeah, and I, it's, I know this, this is fairly complicated, you know, it's a lot of calculations behind these numbers, but it, it basically, you can basically whittle it down to one thing, whereas if we've got 40 schools in the school system and the average life expectancy of 40 years, that means you've got to do one a year, right? In order for the average lifespan of your, of your schools, of, of the maintenance to not deteriorate. And that's going to require a lot of money. I think it's going to, there, there's going to be sticker shock, right? When we talk with the commissioners about this, for sure. So I think we're going to have a lot of level setting to do. But we have to do one of these projects every, we actually should be doing one every year, and I just don't think that that's feasible, but, you know, we can't push it much more than one every two to three years.
But, and having that conversation with the, with hopefully now the understanding, this is the work in progress. The final budget is what the bid market dictates at that time. And then we, and then we do the things we've done at Career and Tech and East Middle, we do value engineering, we do other adjustments to bring a project in, into budget. And then Bill mentioned the cost share shift, which we have known is coming and have successfully sort of helped put off. One other thing to bear in mind is the state, as of last General Assembly, also does participate in some design work, which historically they never did. So the state take away, but the state also giveth back. And if you remember, I think we brought a late adjustment because they retroactively, for either East or Career and Tech.
Correct.
For Career and Tech, they retroactively went back to a pre-approved project before that, that statutory change and, and awarded us additional money to, and that was well-received and very timely. And so we, we knew this cost share couldn't be avoided forever. Hopefully it goes back up in time. But in the meantime, the state has expanded what they participate in a little bit, so that helps.
Okay. Thank you for all of that. And I, I will say that I, I support the inclusion of, of the, each of the elementary school additions and, you know, the pride program at, at Friendship Valley. Those costs, you had mentioned earlier, those costs have all gone up, but that's not unexpected given the current environment, from what we had seen the projections to be a couple of years ago when we were contemplating those projects. But I would, I also support the, the inclusion of the addition at Freedom and Sykesville Middle. I think after all the extensive discussions that we've had over the last couple of years about redistricting and building additions and what is the best way to go about all that, I think I'm in support of this being the, the best way forward.
Mr. Whistler.
Thank you so much. Just, I, I know we're not talking about it a lot, but, you know, if we can't get relief from the blueprint initiative and we're forced to shuffle teachers around, I, I still, I keep talking about it, and I know it's difficult to forecast, but if we have to shift teachers around, and I'm just going to give you a scenario, we have 20 classrooms in a school and we only have 14 teachers, are we putting enough money in contingency aside to make those quick renovations, to maybe break down walls and expand classrooms so that you can accommodate more students? I'm just, that just worries me a little bit, especially if we have to make these drastic changes at, at the end of the school year. Is that, is that being thought about and planned for?
I can't speak to it as part of the capital, because the capital is, is, you know, the capital request to the county, that would be more of an operating fund and stuff.
Okay.
So we, we're not asking for any capital dollars from the county as part of that.
If a scenario like that came to pass, you're, you're actually funding your local, our local capital project that we call infrastructure renewal. So if we had a scenario where sort of reacting within one year of a staffing change, we felt like we needed to modify a couple of classrooms, I think we would probably go to the, the local infrastructure capital project. I don't know where else we'd be able to go.
Okay.
And that's something that you've been funding yourselves through fund balance transfers or, or surpluses for the last several years. We started doing that once we had basically reduced all of the, the maintenance budget. That being said, at a certain point, it's, it's probably some capital considerations and some, let me use the word reimagining space within certain schools. So spaces that perhaps have been collaborative spaces or planning might not be, or more, more teachers would be traveling throughout the building that, and certainly that happens in other school systems much more regularly than it happens here. But, you know, sort of a cultural shift for us, those, those would be the kinds of things we, you know, we'd have to be.
Yeah, and then in contrast, those places like Tonton Elementary, Northwest Middle, you're going to have all these staff here, I mean, they deserve desks and, and rooms to sit in and, you know, it's just, I just hope we can get some relief, but I just see that as a big expense coming up that we.
It's, it's on our radar, it's not so much on their radar in terms of the CIP, it's on our radar in general and on Mr. Shockney's radar as he works with schools. Just the influx of the new comp ed money in this current fiscal year resulted in a, in additional staffing in certain schools, and schools have had to react to that, including Mr. Carver, who is opening a brand-new building with way more staff than he thought he was, you know, thought he was going to have as we constructed it.
And then the other question I had, and again, I don't know if it applies to this, but are, are we looking forward at like maybe scoping out parcels around the county for future expansion? I mean, yeah, because, you know, what do you need, 20 acres for an elementary school? Or, you know, if we expand with enrollment, with enrollment growing, what kind of efforts are we doing to forward look for future sites for a high school or a middle school or an elementary school? And keeping in mind those adequate acreage requirements.
And so, Mr. Whistler, that is, in Carroll and I think most counties, or at least those I'm, I'm familiar with, that's usually a function of the county government. And so that's also a subject that is, when you get into specifics, warrants a closed session discussion as well, but, but, you know, the county would generally inventory land for various purposes, including future schools. And I honestly can't stand here right now and comment on what, you know, what inventory or what real estate they may have in reserve for any reason, but yeah.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to bring up William Winchester, and we have that on our page in the back page. As far as the feasibility study, what do you think of that?
It's scheduled in the, in the CIP request and fiscal year '28.
So that would be the feasibility study done then?
Yeah, the 400, it was 400,000 planned in the request. And that, in the note, I talked about that it's a little bit higher cost for that feasibility study because it's on the same site as West Middle. So we would have the architect kind of master plan, and West Middle is also on the list of modernization. So, you know, if they're going to do anything on that site, they would kind of have to figure out, well, what are we going to do in the future with West Middle? So we would kind of combine the study at least for both of those.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Go ahead, Ms. Sevigny.
Mr. Kane, so the last bunch of years, there were a lot of roofing and HVAC projects that, that we had to cycle through. But we've made pretty good progress of, of getting through all of those. Are we going to have a, it looks like we might have a reprieve from some of that?
We've made it through most of the roof replacement projects. There's only a, you know, handful left in the six-year cycle and, you know, I think in the last couple of years, there's actually not a roof. But the, the HVAC replacement projects, we still, we're, we're behind on those. We have, we're, this plan would have us doing two a year for the whole plan, except one year where we would be doing South Carroll High School, which is a large project that would cost about the same as doing two, two elementary schools. So, and, and a lot of those HVAC systems are well past their useful life, so like those are still a priority, I would say. There's not a reprieve. And even outside of the six-year plan, there's more schools that have HVAC systems that are going to be beyond their estimated useful life. So the roof request will probably, you know, the six years in the future after this six-year cycle, there'll be a little bit of a, because, because we'll be, we've been replacing those single ply roofs that were done, you know, in the 90s with, with a longer-lasting built-up roof system, which will give us relief in the future. We won't have to replace as many as frequently as we did, you know, we just had a large amount due in the last decade, so.
Right. Yeah, I apologize, I had misspoken. I, I meant just the roofs, not the, not the HVACs, because those are clearly continuing. But the roofs, we're going to get to kind of the end of that, that replacement level. And do, do we, it looks like we do have a reprieve on, on the roofs piece, that those are going to last longer, we don't have to start over again quite yet?
Yeah, so, so right, so the roof, the single ply roof systems we were replacing were 15- to 20-year life cycle, whereas the ones we've been replacing them with a built-up roof is 30, you know, you would hope to get 30 years, in some cases longer. And there's redundancy built in, so even when they're past their useful life, they don't leak as much as a single ply roofing system. So, yeah, in the future, we, we don't see us having to do, I think we did something like 15 roofs in the last 10, you know, eight to 10 years, which was a big chunk. We were doing, some years we did three or four. But like in the future, we will be down to maybe, you know, once every, one roof replacement every few years or every three or four years, so.
Okay.
So yeah, the shift will be to the HVAC systems and then, you know, ideally, if we could pick up the modernization schedule, some of those HVAC systems would be addressed when we modernize the school. You know, East Middle was, was the, was the top HVAC replacement in, in the priority, but because we did the modernization, we were able to address it as part of the whole building, so.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you very much, sir. I just, a reminder, at 1:00 PM on Wednesday, October 11th, 2023, we will have a joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners in this boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. And at the same day, at 5:00 PM, Wednesday, October 11th, 2023, we will have a board meeting with public participation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Ms. Sevigny?
Second.
Second? All right. Dr. Dorsey will second that. Nope, we're fine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Agreed.
Have a good evening.